Good evening. We will start with comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda. All right, seeing none, we will move on to any amendments to the agenda?
We do not.
All right, we'll shift to, oh, this is good, we're on track. We'll shift to our announcements and student representative report.
So, going from chronological order here, there was a blood drive hosted at South Burlington High School on October 27th, and from what I could recall, that was a very successful event, and lots of people came to give blood. On October 26th, lots of students from South Burlington High School represented at the Rowland Conference. It's a conference that it's for like this committee of people, and also this intention of creating educational environments that are productive and modern, and really, you know, benefit learning. And every year, there is a conference with a different theme. This year was about racial bias and making sure that the classrooms are inclusive. And I know that big picture students went as a group, and also some students in the traditional school system who were freshmen, I believe, or sophomores, and were advocating for proficiency-based learning at the conference. So that was really awesome. The French exchange students arrived on October 28th, I believe, and they're going to be with us for, I think, like the following week. Yeah, so there were some Georgia students and other BT regions that did not have school two days ago due to the high winds. And then the South Burlington High School's Got Talent, Wolf's Got Talent Show is happening tomorrow night. Also, in terms of the student rep recruitment update, I have spoken to Mr. Burke, and we created a plan and a timeline. An email was sent out to all juniors at South Burlington High School announcing the position, and Mr. Burke has been, you know, on his social media, been announcing it as well. And we have, I've spoken to a couple of students already, I've gotten a few emails back, been answering questions, and we have one official filled-out application so far. I'm going to try to grab another filled-out application before the end of the week. And once we have those in order, and we perhaps contact the references, Mr. Burke and I are going to sit down and contact all of you as well, forward you the names, and try to plan a, like, an in-person meeting with them, like, an interview session per se, and then hopefully by the next board meeting, we could have at least an interested participant as a second student representative. Yeah, no problem.
Any other announcements?
We have a lot of, we have a lot of activities going on, too. I know our clubs and activities are popping, and particularly some of our sports programs have been popping. I know girls soccer and boys soccer, field hockey have been in some of the state semifinals. I think our, our boys have moved on.
Girls' field hockey.
Girls', yeah. So anyway, there's, there's been a lot of activity, and there's been a lot of activity outside of the classrooms as well, so just want to let you know that.
Any other announcements from the board? Thank you. Thanks. The, oh, I will highlight that I think the article written by you will be in this week's other paper, and it will be on the roles and responsibilities of the student reps, so that's very timely.
Awesome.
Great. Good. All right, we'll move on to agenda, item six, city and school collaboration.
So we haven't had another meeting. Our next meeting, I think, is getting pushed off, right? But, um...
December 10th, we have a meeting. I mean, November 10th, sorry.
Yeah. So, again, that's just for people who don't know, the city manager, Chair of the City Council, Elizabeth, and myself have a regular standing meeting with them, again, with the intent to really talk about things that are going on, and how to make sure, make sure we're communicating and collaborating as effectively as we can around things that are happening in our different places. That said, there are some things that have been recommended. There's been the solar array, they wanted to do a little press release on the solar array. This is an array that was established now, it's been in, in operation for some time now, and this is on the, where the landfill is, and it's been, you know, giving money back to both the city and the school, and so there wanted to be a, but Thursday was the planned date, that date now has been postponed because of rain, and I don't know, you know, let it rain, let it, you know, it doesn't always have to be sunny, but anyway, it was canceled, and I'm not sure when that date, the new date will be, but I'll make sure to keep you posted. The other thing is, I know that the city, and I haven't been able to connect with them, the city also wanted to have some sort of a press conference regarding the Rick Marcaut, you know, or actually, just on the way into the Rick Marcaut, the property where the, your, the current construction is happening now, the city is proposing another building, a city office building and library, just to the east of where this building that's currently being constructed. And they want to have some sort of a press conference, and I haven't really figured out, I haven't talked to Kevin or Ilana, who have been requesting, I think they wanted to have it on the portion of our parking lot, you know, the south side of the Rick Marcaut parking lot, but I'm not sure of the time, you know, there's a lot of things that are happening at that time, you know, at school time, that, that may not be great, so I have to figure that out. But just letting you know that they're wanting to do that. I think that this is anticipation of a potential request to the voters for a property for the city office idea, city office and library idea on that property, for potentially maybe a March, a March vote, I don't know. But anyway, I'll keep you posted on that.
Is, is there a requirement that the, that an LOI be finalized before that?
No, there would not be, this, the current proposal, as we, as we at least understand it currently, because it doesn't have the L on it, or what was going to be the recreation space, I know it's, it's hard for people to visualize, but...
But it doesn't require the little...
It doesn't require any additional land from the school. Now, obviously, Rick Marcaut is, you know, pretty close to that, that driveway, but it doesn't impind, impinge on our property, and therefore doesn't require any sort of LOI.
And then how about, I, I've heard the library move has been postponed to December?
I think it was also put in the other paper, and the other paper's, has moved it up to December, first part of December, where, again, there's some folks from the high school that are representing that, that transition, along with Patrick Burke. So we're, we're kind of continuing. We do have a plan on how to reuse some of that space, and to make it effective for, for the high school, but there's been no yet definitive date in December when that's going to happen.
Is there, would it be appropriate, David, to set some time on a future agenda for kind of that, those potential plans, and...
Sure.
I don't know what the best timing would be, but it might make sense to discuss that within the next month or so?
Sure, yeah.
Great. Anything else on city-school collaboration?
I know I've been hearing some questions, like, here and there from the students, as to, like, some clarification with the library move, so I do think it would be helpful to have a moment to speak a little bit more about that on the next meeting's agenda, and I can also come back with, like, maybe a couple clarifying questions that I've been, you know, hearing circle around.
Perfect.
I do think on the, on the library move, it's as much about our space, it's, it's a lot about, that's what we're in control of, our space, but it's also about the city library, and what the city library will either continue, will continue to do, or do more of. And so if the city now is going to be loca, you know, going to be located for a period of time in the mall area, then a question that I would have is what kind of opportunities and programs are going to remain, and/or maybe be enhanced, where it may allow for additional opportunities for kids out of, out of school time, summertime, where they can perhaps do a variety of things in, in and around the mall, whether it's supporting, volunteering, internships, et cetera. And we know now that, at least, I think what we all hear is that Target's now coming in, into that, that space at some point in time. So, you know, the opportunities through that transition, there may be some important opportunities that should be explored.
All right. Okay, seeing no other questions, we'll move on to agenda, item seven, legislative input.
So I didn't, I didn't, I didn't have any, I didn't have any items here. I think this is just an open conversation around where, where we are, and where you want to go in preparation for the legislative, a legislative breakfast. Typically, we've, we've kind of prepared topics that we share with our legislators, and then allow them to have really some feedback with us on some of the things that they're thinking about, so there's kind of a, you know, a, a share. I think there's a fair amount of information that you're going to hear about in, in the budget that has some implications to our, to our, our future, and some of that is legislative, of great legislative importance, I think, around the impacts of some of the things that are happening, albeit healthcare, the property yields, you know, and some of those other requirements that have come down. But I don't know if there's some direction that you'd like to go in. I know some of you have gone to the SBA, this is maybe an opportunity, and you had some of the resolutions that were out there, whether this kind of pulls it all together a little bit, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the biggest question is, is how much we want to weigh in on some of the issues that we know are coming, and, for instance, that there is going to be the issue of whether health, the health insurance negotiations should be moved from local school boards to the state level. The VSB did vote positively for a resolution, encouraging that, despite the fact that with the direction of this board, I voted against that. But we may want to, as a board, communicate more formally with the other legislators, including the, the senators, that, that we oppose that move. I mean, I certainly know that we can get Ann, Maida, and Helen, the other representatives, ear on this pretty easily, but I think we should also express that to the, to the senators as well. The couple other issues that are probably going to come up, and we should decide if we, what we want to do with those, one is, there is going to be talk, but I don't know of any bill that's out there right now regarding teacher or staff to student ratios. That's certainly something we'll be talking about when we get into the budget tonight. I've already, I happened to be at an event where I was sitting with Dave Sharp for a little while, and I expressed to him how we don't like mandates, particularly mandates telling us what kind of ratios we should have, and, and that, at least, that's what I will be saying. The other one is, is of course collective bargaining, and a change to collective bargaining, there's already, I mean, there, there is the movement to the state level of bargaining over health insurance, but there's also a bill that's out there that would ban strikes and imposition, and there will be a bill introduced that would modify guidelines, and I'm in the process of, of getting additional sponsors for that bill. Just on that issue, and I probably should have brought this up in announcements, but I'll, I'll mention it here because it's related, that on December 11th, at 6:30, at the Tuttle Middle School, there's going to be a legislative forum on the collective bargaining bills and issue that's out there. So you may want to note that, and want to make sure that the public understands that. So those are, I mean, those are the three big issues, as I understand them, there's, part of it is, I mean, I don't know of the other, I, there aren't any particular bills out there regarding cost containment. I wouldn't be surprised to see something along the lines of level funding, and maybe we just generally want to express our opposition to certain things, or, or not, I'm not sure what the best approach. But I think it's important to, to definitely contact, if we feel very strongly on the movement of the negotiations, that at least we, we have more information on, and we could send something to the senators.
I'd say the last one, because I don't think we've had a board meeting since Martin and I went to the VSB annual meeting, but all the resolutions that were just discussed did pass by varying majorities of the VSB membership that was in attendance. I'd say the highest was Martin, maybe 60%?
I think 77% for standards, for fact finders. And for a study on the state-funded early retirement program, 68% was how much the statewide health insurance negotiations passed by, but, you know.
And the other one was the use of reserves, there was some guidance on the use of reserves, and given that we do have a capital reserve fund, and we may be considering continuing to fund that, or potentially using parts of it, that may be another one that we just want to understand. Several of the resolutions were intended to support specific legislative activity, but they did anticipate legislative discussion, so wanted to be prepared to support members in, in that venue, so.
Right.
So that was the other issue.
Martin, who do you expect to be at this legislative forum on December 11?
Legislators.
All of them? You know, all six senators, or one representative?
Um, I, I'm not sure if it's extended beyond the four South Burlington representatives. It's probably, we would, the, I know we have six senators, but one of them is a resident of South Burlington, Michael Srotkin, I would assume that he would also be there, as far as presenting the different positions.
They're all invited, I would assume.
What's that?
They're all invited, I would assume.
Uh, all the...
Senators.
I don't know. I should know that, since I've sent out the invitation.
I'd love to see them all there.
So is this sponsored by the legislators?
Yes.
Is it, is it to listen to a panel, or to just discuss them?
It is, it is, it is hopefully to get input from the community. It's, it's as much a response to requests from community members that, that we have this, this community discussion, and, and because there are bills involved, it makes sense that we're going to kind of kick it off. So, I guess I should call it not a forum, but a community discussion.
Gotcha.
I need to do better with my marketing for this. Yes, yes, so.
Good. Any other, and do we, that, we should also put on the next, city-school collaboration, a legislative breakfast, because we typically do have some kind of breakfast with the legislators between the school board and the city prior to the session starting in January. I don't know if we targeted a date or not.
I think we, we talked about it, it was probably a couple meetings ago.
Too soon, yeah.
Yeah, and we have lost that.
Any other comments from the board on legislative input?
Well, I guess my question is, what are our options for input? I mean, should we talk about whether we want to go ahead and draft something, or are we just expected on our own to reach out to folks? I mean, how do we want to...
Well, given that this was a little bit of a preliminary discussion, I guess I'd leave, say to the board, do you want to think about this and put it on a future agenda, or we can certainly have some of that discussion right now, and it might open up a, a need for additional information, too.
I would like to see us weigh in on the, on the collective bargaining side, especially with regard to the healthcare, and, and I don't know how others feel about that, but obviously, given what I've said in previous meetings, I feel very strongly about that, not moving to the state level. But I don't know exactly what the pros and cons are of us, you know, weighing in formally versus us reaching out individually, and how would be best to approach it, and whether others agree. I know we have been debating about it last time, and now that it's kind of been formally adopted as a, as a resolution to kind of support, you know, whatever moves go in that direction, I don't know how, if people's opinions have changed, or...
Well, and, and, Martin, can you clarify, I don't, I did not walk away from that thinking the resolution was a definitive preference for one way or the other, but it was to make sure that the VSB was prepared to present legislative testimony. I can't, I don't have the resolution written in.
Well, I mean, it's, if they're going the approach of moving it to the state level, it should, it should be negotiated by school board members in some sort of a committee. I think that, that's primarily. How, how much the VSB is going to take that as a green light for more broadly advocating? It's not clear. They have some flexibility. But we certainly, three years ago, we drafted a memo that said, here are the issues that are important to us, and where we stand on them, and we could certainly...
This is the white paper on school funding that's out there.
Yeah, school funding and others, and there certainly are going to be this, those issues this year, and it, I think it doesn't hurt for us to put something like that together. That can hit some of these, some of these issues. We can strongly ta, make a statement about the move of the negotiations, but we can also talk about what we think on level funding the budget, and what we think about mandating ratios, as opposed to following what the VSB resolution is, which is to help us, provide us some guidance. Yeah, I think that that's, that would be helpful.
How does the rest of the board feel?
Regarding student-teacher ratios, you know, we, we have in our policy, it's a, a class-size guideline that we try to keep below, but I think with student-teacher ratios, there might be a push to keep the student-teacher ratio high, because I often hear discussions in, in the media, and on the discussion boards, in the comments, that the student-teacher ratio is, let's see, student to teachers, it's, it's too low. So it might be going in the opposite direction of the policy that we have in our manual right now, and I'm not sure what the, whether the push is to increase it or decrease it, or just clarify it.
The, the push is definitely to have more students per teacher and per staff.
Okay.
It's all the cost containment discussion.
Yes.
Yes, so it's, it's definitely that push. So that was what we talked about last time, is I was concerned that I didn't really want to support us, you know, focusing on any kind of mandate, or at the, at the level of student-teacher ratio, it was more, I wanted, I was hoping to have a focus on what was driving those ratios, like, a study of what was driving those ratios, and as Martin expressed last time, this was sort of us, you know, voting along with the resolution that the VSB had put out. The VSB is also sort of trying to prevent a, sort of a regulation that says, you know, student-teacher ratios need to come to a certain level, increase to a certain level. And, and what they had in the resolution, I wasn't quite happy with the language, but it was better than, you know, what the real push is, which is for legislation about those. So...
Right, yeah. So I, I would also think, as we're working on the budget, and we're looking at this very issue of, of ratios and such, that could be part of the communication to the senator that, you know, here's what our ratios are, and here's why they are what they are, whatever they are, and here's why we need to have this ratio to be providing this, the education. So, so I think that would be helpful. I mean, we could plan on trying to have something in, in early to mid-December. I'm happy to help on that, I don't want to be the first drafter, seems somehow a conflict of interest.
Well, we're currently going to start digging in on all of that work, as you know, and some of that we have tonight is kind of the, some of the, the data that we'll start to go along with, how we're going to do that. I mean, fundamentally, before we get into the, the ratios, I mean, I feel like ratios speak to a component, but don't speak to the opportunities in which we're talking about in the state of Vermont, and I think that's a really, that's, that's the big, big part, if not the biggest part of the equation, is you've got ratios, but you've got opportunities, because they don't necessarily equal. For, for really small, small schools, that ratio may be really, really small, staff to student, but that the opportunities are significantly out of balance with what others have. So I, I think that's one, this caution. The other thing, I think, you know, legislatively, while we're on the conversation, I think that there needs to be some real sensitivity around any program, or any act, bill that happens, that there are some very, very strict awareness of cost implications. I think that, you know, we've, we've seen some things happen, again, this wasn't legislative, it was more the governor, but, you know, the healthcare, you know, clawback. If we're going to have some validity to budgeting, I think there needs to be some really, really stringent adherence to, if it is going to impact, have a cost piece, that I think that needs to be talked about, how you're going to phase it in over time. You know, there's got to be some sort of a, a process by which it gets phased in. I'm not saying, obviously, that no, never, but it's extremely hard, given the way the legislature and the budget development process in schools. It, it, out of the gate, it puts us in a, in a disadvantageous delivery. It's a, it's a non-deliverable, right out of the gate, unless it's something could be acted on and said, you know, on or before, you know, we go to, we go to January in print or, or March. So I think there needs to be some, just some financial cost implication, timelining that's like essential, and that we don't, and it just doesn't, just doesn't ever feel right, and this was, I think, an extreme highlighted year with, with the governor doing that. But we've had many years where there's been some things that happened that it's like, we didn't under, we had no idea that that was going to be the cost implication upon the decision that we made, enough said.
So, so can I suggest that perhaps Bridget and I, with David, that we work on a similar type white paper to look at the first meeting in December, and then, you know, target that?
Yeah, and just to paraphrase, I think what I'm hearing is, there's a, there's a umbrella of the collective bargaining process, with potentially healthcare being a subset of that. There's also a cost containment umbrella, where healthcare straddles between process and cost containment. Student ratios and level funding fall under that, and I think, David, your issue of mandates or financial cost implications falls under cost containment, in that it's the antithesis of that. But is that a fair summary?
Yes.
All right, any, any comments from the public? Yes?
Yeah, when you talk about a push for having more students per teacher, that's coming from the legislator, because, you know, the parents I know are like, let's bring down some of those teachers.
It's from the, uh...
You know, you're saying it's coming from Harvard?
Secretary of Education, yes.
The Secretary of...
Well, the governor's office, Secretary of Education.
Okay, I saw it, it was in the digital secretary's.
I mean, in, in general, what's, the concern is that we've had decreasing enrollment in the state of Vermont, and we've not been, this is, this is, this is kind of the secretary's position, that within the state of Vermont, given the decreased enrollment, our staff to student ratios have not changed. Our, our staff and teacher ratios have remained the same, if not grown, therefore making those ratios smaller. In other words, number of adults to a student have gotten a lot, you know, larger, so that's, that's a big...
You're around the Vermont median.
Right, but there again, I think the fundamental piece is around cost, and with the draw from the Ed Fund being such a big concern, one way in which is currently being discussed, again, this is the secretary's position, is that we've got to address the student to staff, student to teacher ratios in Vermont. And, you know, I'm going to say that, you know, for what we, we're, we're a large district, we're a district that, again, my feeling is we run, and we provide good opportunities, and we run fairly efficiently, but those, those ratios can be very different in small, different places around the community. So that's a little bit of my concern, is one size, you know, you've got to, kind of take the considerations for each community in there. But generally, that's, that's the concept around this ratio conversation with the secretary.
Can I just ask, how is that ratio looked at? Like, are they looking at the special ed kids, and all the one-on-ones, and the increased needs, or is it, I mean, are they including all of that?
Right, so when they do the ratios, they've worked harder, I don't, I can't, with 100% assurance, say they've got it apples to apples.
Right.
It used to be, in the past, at least for me, 20 years ago, they was, you know, we would get compared, but, you know, I might be counting in because I said this is what my staff is, and somebody else might be excluding support staff, or parent educator, or nurse, or librarian. So they've worked harder to try to determine what that, that, that set is. We're all encouraged currently, I'm saying to my, we have to really dig in and look at the data to say, does that data represent what we think is right? And I think that's important for everybody. But they've worked hard to, to create apples to apples, and have that calculation.
Do you realize the implication of that with the, you know, you're going to have a higher ratio because of that?
In different places, yeah, and I think this, this is getting into, you know, conversations which are, are good ones, I'm not sure that we want them tonight, but Act 46, in, in looking at mergers, where we have some places that, you know, have 50 students, K through 12, you know, and certain... where we have some places that, you know, have 50 students K through 12, you know, in certain parts of Vermont. And they're trying to figure out how they can exist. And their student to staff ratio, their student to staff ratio is really significantly, you know, out of proportion to others. So they're wanting to look at that, too, but very different.
The sense I get is it started out as a pretty broad brush approach, looking at all staff to student ratios, and basically saying a reduction of a half to one F T E and the total ratio generates an incredible dollar amount in savings. So directionally, if the state can start to move in that direction, it's less pressure on the Ed Fund. But I think it's generating these kinds of conversations now. The other V S B A resolution that showed up, which was peripheral to this, was a state-funded retirement incentive for districts that did not rehire positions. So it was kind of an incentive to reduce staff with an accelerated retirement that would be funded at the state level, which at the end of the day, it's all tax dollars. But that was one that generated some conversation. And it wasn't a specific support or lack of support. It was really just providing some information and a study support there. All right. We'll move on. Thanks. We'll move on to Agenda Item 8, the F Y 19 budget.
So we are in discussion on the budget, clearly. So to the board, there is a, there is a handout that we did not get to you ahead of time. We're also going to walk you through a little bit of our last year's 2.5 planning and budgeting. And I think what we're going to do is, we're going to walk you through a little bit of 2.5 and some of the information specific to 2.5. And then we want to dive into a little bit of the data here. And this is in the packet. You have information that we just referenced on the secretary's memo on the ratios. So John, if you will, walk us, walk the board through at least some of the bigger items around 2.5 planning and budgeting, what we kind of see as our future.
Yeah, this is not a redo of the monitoring report for 2.5, but it's a look at what the policy governance, 2.5 policy.
Do they have 2.5? Do you have that?
Yeah, you should have it here. I distributed it at different places. 2.5 speaks to the budget development process. And kind of, once a year, we're supposed to look at this and report whether or not we did it. So I think it's auspicious to look at this now, to say, okay, what bases are we going to have to have tagged by the time we wrap this process up in March? And let's make sure that we make an effort to do that. So that 2.5 asks, say, on the detailed policies, number two, says we're supposed to, it says omit, but we're supposed to include credible projections of revenue and expenses. We're supposed to disclose the assumptions that went into those estimates and try to predict any financial impact from any of these things. Detail policy three says that we're not supposed to provide less for board prerogatives during the year than set forth in the policy governance investment policy. So we'll look at the board budget and see where that relates. The, I've numbered the pages, albeit crudely. The top of page three asks how the financial plan might minimize risk for the district. And I just noted some of the ones we found last year, and I hope we can continue to do some of these. One of them is to include judicious contingency accounts in the budget. We can't predict everything that's going to happen. So where we can and to the extent that we should, we ought to include some contingency accounts. We did, in the 1617 budget, create a maintenance capital reserve, which is a kind of a long-term contingency. You can use it for a variety of things, but it might help maintain your plant in difficult times. And this also asks for the provision of different kinds of insurances that reduce risk to the district. And of course, we do provide insurances throughout the, all the risks that we might entertain. On page five, the, I've highlighted some areas on credible projections, that revenue and expense projections are based on both historical trends and plans for the budget year. So in our budget, we look at what we spent in particular areas last year and the year before and say, do we plan to change our program in those areas at all? Were the budgets we set previously sufficient for that particular function or not? And do we need to increase them? So that we'll be going through that process in the next couple of months. And the difficult part about that is when you're trying to do something new, how much more money do you add to do that? And if you're trying to cut back, how much can you cut back without damaging your program? Another item in here is that we would have a stewardship plan that projects our facility's needs out several years. And of course, we've done that for a while and we'll continue to do it. But I think the pressure to maintain that will be increased, given the budgets that I think we're going to have this year. Again, disclose planning assumptions, try to impact, forecast a tax impact of the various things we propose. And a caveat at the bottom, the tax rate variables are not controlled by the school district. Some people think that, you know, we create the tax rate. We don't. We're a creature of the state and we kind of do what their tax rate formula demands. The business office estimates revenue and expense projections. We try to do that accurately, and I think we've done a good job over the years, before my time, and I'll try to continue that. There's a section in here from the city charter that talks about preparation and submission of the budget on page six. So that in developing the budgets, we're supposed to have an estimate of the financial condition for the current year, for the end of the current year. We're supposed to have a statement of appropriations recommended for expenses and for capital improvements, and we do that. An estimate of revenues from all sources. And the capital budget here says five fiscal years. We go 10 or 15 years in our stewardship plan, albeit in declining accuracy as you go further out, of course. Projections of expenses are supposed to be based on employment contracts and obligations that are in place. And of course, now we have the teacher's contract and the support staff contract in place for F Y 19. We don't have one in place for the administrator's contract, but we will be working on that as well as we go through the budget process. Page eight, again, talks about labor contracts. Talks about predicting the financial impact, the tax rate process. And we have here used the budget workshop tool that has been developed and used over the years. We'll look at that again tonight as a kind of preview of what may come. And then we talk about policy three, which talks about board prerogatives during the year. And the board actually has a budget shown on page nine for the 1718 year. So the board should decide if this budget of its own meets its own needs or whether we should add or subtract from it. We did have a little scramble on the board stipends here last year. I think that we ought to try to rectify this year. But there's also training for board members, conferences, the legal services, negotiations budget comes within the school board's prerogative. So we ought to look at that, make sure it meets the needs of the board. And if you see anything in there that you think does not, please let me know in the next couple of weeks or next few weeks, anyway, and we'll try to rectify that. But I think it's important to look at the goalposts we're trying to hit with the budget. And as we go forward with this, to make sure we try to meet them. So I'd kind of stop there for a second.
That's good. No, I think it's good. We haven't really done this as much as, you know, in the past. We, you know, this is a 2.5 financial planning and budgeting. And we are in the process of updating. We usually do this twice a year. This was done last in May. But at least from my perspective, these are good tools for us to look at and for you to hold me accountable to around some of the commitments in that work. So I know that some of you may say, like, how is this relevant? I hope that you see that there is relevance, because it is all about the planning around how we sustain ourselves. So next, we want to get into some of the current parameters. And I want to acknowledge that the board has absolutely given already some directions on kind of a level-funded budget, a kind of a continuation of the budget, if we were to keep all of the same. And then we're going to have some other assumptions here that you'll see in this document tonight. This is, again, just as, we're in the process of doing some very basic calibration and starting to pull in some of what we think might be assumptions, but it's pretty early. We haven't gotten a lot of direction from the state, and we haven't gotten a lot of information back on our enrollments, et cetera. So there's, these are truly just kind of assumptions that we're drawing in. So with that said, John, why don't you go ahead and walk through this? Let's take a pause. Is there any immediate questions that folks have?
Yeah. Are we going to talk a little bit about the memorandum?
We're going to go through that document right now, Martin.
Okay, thanks.
So this piece here that I think went out by email a couple of days ago has four different pieces in it relating to budget. And it's not much here yet. We don't have much from the state or internally from budgets yet. Frankly, we've been hurrying to get insurance stuff settled for this year. And this is about the time of year we start getting going on, okay, what's the budget going to look like? And I'm trying to be, trying to share the information we get to the state, get from the state. And last time around, we talked about a couple of communications from Rebecca and from the Director of Administration that talked about possible shortfalls in the Ed Fund. The first one, we've already talked about, the memorandum from Rebecca Holcomb on managing staff attrition. And there's no legislation or directive in this memo from Rebecca, but it is an encouragement that every time we have staff turnover, we ought to look at whether that person ought to be replaced in its same configuration or whether, you know, a support staff person should or could be replaced by a teacher, a full-time teacher, a part-time teacher, whether, when a staff person leaves, if we really need to replace that person, or whether we can do without. And what drives that is some data on page two of Rebecca's memo that says that Vermont is one of the lowest, if not the lowest, staff to student, I'm going to get it backwards, highest, lowest student to teacher ratio, student to staff ratio in the states. This report shows that Vermont has on average 10.55 students per every teacher and that that number has dropped by point two since 2011, 12. And further down on that page, we see that the enrollment statewide in Vermont has declined from 2012, 13, from 80,00392 to 76,0355 in F Y 17. It's about a 5% drop. And the staff in the various schools has dropped from 18,252 to 17,968, about 2%. So that's a concern that maybe we should be doing with fewer staff people.
Yeah, and that ratio depicts it there, that it's decreasing, right? You see on the very bottom of that box from 4.40 to 425. So that is the fundamental issue, you know, that is being highlighted. And as John has indicated, that, you know, there's strong encouragement around statewide, looking at how you can improve that ratio. But why don't we pause there for a second, because I think there's maybe some questions from Martin or Steve on this particular memo. Others have seen it, heard it, or heard from others. And it's probably a good time for a pause for questions on what's in it.
Yeah, I did have one question. As far as, and actually, it mirrors one of the questions you heard earlier, which is, is the, this student to teacher ratio, is it all licensed teachers, meaning including special education teachers? Or does it exclude them? I just think that we need to understand. There seems to be three ratios we should be looking at. One is all licensed teachers. One is just the classroom teachers, excluding the special education teachers. And then one is all the staff. And I think that, this is not so much of a question. I think that we should know for the budget and for communications to the community as well as to the legislature, where all three of those are. And the question I have is jumping ahead actually to the page four and whether you are undertaking a process of answering the questions that the Secretary Holcomb's memo lays out as important for districts to consider.
Yes. We are using, and I can honestly say, I've done this pretty much every year that I do the budget. And I think for those of you who've been around, we typically looked at that. And some, you know, I've, we've done okay, but, you know, this past year on enrollment and even classroom teacher perspective, based on enrollment, sometimes we've got it right, sometimes not. Administrators to do the work, you know, we've made some adjustments in central office to try to, you know, kind of right-size, whether that was the right thing to do back then or not, but we'll continue to look at this. I think, you know, there are fundamental opportunities within, you know, I would say, Chittenden County. And how can we look at how we can maybe right-size some of the things that we do collaboratively, particularly as enrollments or class participation maybe goes down? And this is part of our work, and you've heard me talk about this with some of our partner schools around, how can we make sure that we keep the same opportunity or keep the amount of opportunities, but do it in a way that might not mean that all of us have to do all of the same things? So there's continued, there's been discussion on that, but part of that is when you're in the throes of the issues, it's hard to think, you know, and have the time to take time outside the box to really try to come up with some different things. And again, I can just give you a little bit of an example. It could be, you know, German four. You know, we only, and again, this is hypothetical, but Burlington only has, Burlington may only have four students. And C V U may only have, you know, five. It's too small to run the class. And the fear is this, do you really want to get rid of that class based on that number? Those students have gone from, you know, larger classes. They've migrated through. They have a very, very strong passion for, let's say, the foreign language, but they get to that top-end program. And now, because it's low enrollment, is it right to get rid of it? And where I think there's opportunities is to say, how can we collaborate amongst our closer schools where we can figure out how to do that? And again, part of that work is upon the superintendents and administrators and curriculum people to say, how can we keep these opportunities there? Unfortunately, the, part of the conversation that's most absent in my days is that we don't really talk about the opportunities. We talk about the money. And not we, but generally, we're talking about the money and those difficulties, but we're not really talking about the opportunities. And you can say, we can do less or we can do more, but those, I think, coincide with some of the specific outcomes that we're trying to look at for kids in Vermont. So absolutely, we're looking at this, and we're also trying to collaborate with, how can we do some things a little bit different or begin to think about doing some things differently? This isn't the first time some of you have heard me talk about this, so.
So a couple of follow-up questions. I agree, we have to look at the opportunities, but there's, you have to, we have to balance that. If we have a class that's consistently only having five or six kids in it, yeah, that class might have to be cut. And yes, that's an opportunity that's lost. But, I mean, that obviously has to be measured about how much we're paying for that opportunity. I agree that it's always, you have to be talking about the opportunity component as well. But more specifically, just the question that seems to be impressed by Secretary Holcomb, including at the V S B A meeting, was really the number four. And whether there's an over-reliance on paraeducators for actually the students that may need, you know, may have the highest needs to really have a professional teaching them, are being relegated to a one-on-one paraeducator who can be fabulous, but is not necessarily trained, so to deal with a child with the higher needs. So to, to deal with, with a child with the higher needs. So, I mean, is that a particular place? I've, we've mentioned this before, but if you can address that as far as where we are on, on that particular question.
So I think it is, it is a concern. And you know that when we talked, we talked about this last year. And that's part of, we have a pilot currently running at Rick Marcock. And part of our budget presentation, we'll share with you some of the outcomes of that. With the idea that we were trying to limit, we were trying to, number one, provide the best outcome for kids, but not make it a system that was so dependent upon a one-on-one. And I, I think that's the, the most important part. But I think again, absent of the conversation is, you know, we have some pretty significant issues happening in, in our classrooms. We have many kids that have much more severe trauma. And these adverse child, childhood events are, are significant. And, and I, I can only speak here, but I know that it's, it's pretty prevalent across the state now. And so when we're trying to look at that, that ratio, this is another part of the equation that can't be lost. We need to recognize that we have to support the kids. And I agree, it may not be a par educator, it may be a teacher. But in some cases, that's not necessarily a cost savings. It can be if you can do some resourcing. But the bottom line is that, that's really has been our struggle around trying to right-size or be sensitive to the, to the FTE and the ratio. Stuart, you had it.
Yeah, I just want to say that this is something, you know, Joanne led this. And I don't want to speak for her, you know, a few years ago, but we went from 22 par educators to nine at the middle school, for example. And, you know, we replaced that with two or three teachers. But the issues have, you know, the need for interventionists has grown in the last few years, you know, which is not par professionals, but really kids who have significant, you know, issues that are, you know, often under IP. So we actually were in on this study in the beginning and Chamberlain as well, I don't know, to all the schools, this move away from Paris to, you know, lower that number. But again, in the last two or three years, we've seen significant shifts. So, you know, again, you know, Joanne can talk that specific. But it's not like we've been sitting around ignoring these thoughts and facts.
Well, it will be, it will be good to tie back in. Again, we haven't had a lot of time, you know, feels like we're moving along, but we're in November. We've had, we have a couple, month and a half, a couple of months under our belt with some data on the pilot. And I think that will be important to give to you around kind of how our, directionally we want to move around supporting the students who are exhibiting some of these types of needs. Bottom line, we're absolutely, we know that we need to recognize, you know, and look at kind of this kind of adding of staff and may not, and make sure that we're adding people who have the right level of expertise to provide the right level of support.
Yeah, just, just one final. It just seems the level of scrutiny that we're likely to get from both the community and the state on this issue, we're going to have to, I think, up our game of explaining. I don't doubt what you're saying, but we really have to have this laid out, so.
Yeah, I, we likewise, we, we recognize the same, Martin.
Thanks.
Thanks, Seth.
Other board comments? Just a couple, David.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Alex.
Oh, sure. Thank you. One of the things that South Burlington is a little unique in, in Vermont, is that we are not a shrinking district, at least not at the rate that some other districts are shrinking at. So, you know, we recall just a couple of months ago, we had to deal with an overcrowded class size. So we had to go the opposite direction of reducing staff because of the, because of the size of the class. But, you know, I think, and I also think that some of the suggestions that she has here, such as, you know, reevaluating exactly how many we need, can we do it more efficiently? It's something we should be evaluating constantly, not just at the prompting of the Education Secretary. And I would think that would be a good part of the budget process. And forgive me for, for being new on the board, but I would hope that we're going to go through that anyhow. Is that, is that right, David?
Absolutely. And Stuart alluded to that. Joanne Godak, who's Director of Support Services, she has been on that. The Michael Jean Greco study that was around, she was one of the first pioneers of that and really was exactly that to look at. And this is no insult to par educators, but for some of the neediest students, you should have the most skilled people around them. And so the Michael Jean Greco piece was exactly that, to look at your, your over-dependence on par educators and being able to, you know, reduce that number significantly and bring in a, a more professional, knowledgeable person to deal with that. And that's in, in part what, what Stuart was mentioning. When we were able to significantly reduce that ratio. But as a result of some of these adverse child, the trauma that's come on, we've been, it's, we've been hard-pressed to, to kind of keep that same thing going. That said, we, we all talked about last time, the, the pilot. And that's something that we're, and we're also working with other folks around some of the ACE's work and trying to, you know, help mitigate that, that trend so that we can continue to provide educational opportunities to all kids and not drive us into cost significant restraint. So anyway, it's, it's all, it's all good. All the, all the things that I'm hearing are absolutely right on and I think we're, we're well-positioned.
John, did you have a comment?
No, I was just going to keep going on this just a couple more.
Elizabeth had a question.
You know, let's, let's kind of keep on the topic here. I think we're, we'll have more to discuss on.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, the, the next page, the next two pages are what we call the Budget Workshop Sheet. And this is a, a tool that's been developed here in South Burlington, been used every year for a long time, I think, that tries to use the state's parameters to forecast the, the tax rates that result from different budget actions. And this is the first time you're seeing this, I think, for the FY 19 budget. We don't have much here. The, the first page, what I'm calling, I don't see the.
Well, you have version one, but they're both, I think, version one.
They're both version one. But the first of those two pages simply says, what, what is the impact on, on South Burlington if the eight-cent statewide tax rate comes to pass? So the first thing you have to realize is that the state no longer sets a statewide Ed tax rate. So that's, you can't directly discern that. What they do do is they set the property yield. And the property yield creates a tax rate. So in order to, to determine this, I set the property yield here. The only change so far in the FY 19 preliminary budget column was the reduction in the property yield. In the current year's budget, it's 10,160. And the next year's budget, it's set for 96.51 here by my calculation only. I don't have this from the state yet, but this is my estimate. And that creates an eight-cent increase in the next line down from $1.5159 to $1.5959 for what I think may be a, a kind of a proxy for the statewide Ed tax rate. And then if you apply the CLA, the current year's CLA to that tax rate, you see an 8.34 cent tax rate increase, which is 5.28%. So the upshot of that, that change in yield and change in tax rate, without anything else happening in the budget with the exact same parameters we have today, creates a 5.28% increase in the tax rate for South Burlington. So that's not real great news, I wouldn't say.
Now, that's, again, for, for folks, you know, you know, important components here is that we, number one, we haven't done anything, done anything with the, with the expenditure budget. You see the 49, 268, 888 same, and the same, John hasn't changed that. The other thing is the, the equalized pupils hasn't changed either. Now, that can go up or down. We think it probably will stay right around the same. As we said earlier, enrollments are staying the same. Remember, equalized don't equal seated. And then the other part is the common level of appraisal hasn't changed either. So you see these other variables haven't changed, but John's just holding those static to demonstrate the property yield, if nothing else was to change on our, in our city, what that would result. So, and again, I think the effectiveness of the boxes here are to show you, you know, based on our current data on a, on a home in South Burlington at 335,000 or a condo, you see the implications of what that tax rate would do. Again, we haven't, we haven't done anything other than that one adjustment. So again, it's just kind of a dipstick and again, circle draft. This is only, John is the only one, he has set that property yield estimate. That's not something we do, but for, for purposes of this activity, he's doing that. I just want to be really clear that he, we don't set that. But we're doing some bracketing here to provide some clarity on what we're going to have to kind of be constrained within.
The, the next page, I, I went and took a little more liberty on it. And I said, well, okay, that's what, that's what just changing the yield does. Maybe we can ameliorate that tax rate impact by talking about what our tax rate, what our parameters might really be. So for the purposes of this page, I simply said, let's assume the budget goes up by 2%, just for, just for the heck of it. So I said, the, the next year's budget might go to $50.2 million, a 2% increase. Just imagine, maybe we'll get five additional tuition students. So that adds about $78,000 to the, to the revenue side of the budget. And I, I think we may get a few more equalized pupils in this current year's tax rate season than we did last year. Our enrollments are slightly up and I think that may translate into additional equalized pupils. So I added about 23 equalized pupils to this, this workshop calculation. And again, you'll see the, the property yield I arrived at in the previous exercise at 96.51 results in a, a South Burlington equalized tax rate of $1.6192, a 6.82% increase in the tax rate. And then I applied my estimate for what the CLA might be. We don't have a CLA yet. Nobody's taken a, a chance on that yet, but I think it may go down a little bit. I said 95.44% as opposed to 95.98%. And if that were to happen, the bottom line here on the residential tax rate is a 7.43% increase in the tax rate. So that's not a very happy consequence either. I think, I think the, I think the, the upshot of this analysis, at least for me, is we got a lot of hard work to do. If this eight-cent target from the state holds, it's, it's not going to be a pleasant budget season. And we're going to have to really be diligent on it. But I just want to emphasize, these are just estimates on my part. We don't have any of these numbers yet from the state except that eight-cent number, which I'm trying to use and, you know, to create a yield. But that's, that's where I'm at with that process. We are looking, we are starting to develop the budget. And it's, it's going to be a process to get anything that we can talk about. But hopefully, within the next few weeks, we will. And the only last thing I have here is the budget timeline, which I hope to include at every board meeting so that if we change dates or change what we hope to do, it'll get updated for you and you'll always know what's happening, what's going to happen the next time we meet. So that's, that's kind of where we're at with budget development. And we're furiously trying to get together with numbers and, and that sort of thing.
So this does, I mean, I think from my perspective, this, this does allow for appropriate calibration. You know, I don't, we want to continue to be a, a district that supports kids. But I think given, given the, given the components that we're hearing about, I think it, it kind of calibrates the work that we have to do. This is, again, I hate to say, this is not going to be the year that we're going to be doing major innovative additions in the, in the district. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't collaborate to make those things happen. But I don't, this is not something, we're not going to be in the year where we're going to be able to add. I think that's just got to be clear. Second of all, we know that we have some pretty strict parameters and we have some, we have some, some fragile components of the, of the, of the financing, both city and school, that need to be looked at closely as well. So again, this is, we're, we're in it now. I mean, I don't want to say we're starting. We're in it now. And this is certainly not a scare, but it's, I think, a reality. And I just want to say that we're, this is kind of our, our starting, starting place. And I think if you disagree with what I'm saying or you think I need to be going in a different direction, then this would be helpful for me to, to hear.
You know, one of the, one of the comments I'd make, David, is I know you, you talk about not adding, this will not be a year for adding anything new. One of the conversations we had many years ago when I first started on the board was starting with zero-based budgeting. And I think it, I do think this year represents an opportunity to, you know, I know you're talking about not adding anything new, but I think we need to evaluate everything old and say, is it still applicable in terms of delivering the outcomes we want for our students? Are there opportunities to redeploy dollars, whether they're, it's staff or programming or whatever it might be, that, you know, don't harm the district, but that with, with a thorough evaluation really aren't as robust as they maybe were years ago? And consider, yeah, really looking at either, not necessarily eliminating, but be able to utilize those investments for redeployment. And, you know, I know, looking at the secretaries, and I, I struggle with this personally, between, South Burlington is a competitive, offers a competitive program for students. And we really want to continue to be an attractive place to raise families. This is, this is, our school system is a hallmark of our town. And yet, at the same time, I don't think we can be wed to the, the historic way of always doing things if in fact it is, it isn't serving our entire community any longer. And that, that takes some real tough self-examination. And even though my first reaction to the Secretary Holcomb's letter was, you got to be kidding me, I, I also feel like rather than getting defensive, you know, as we have done, as administration and staff have consistently done, take that hard look. And, and we've got to explain it to the community. We're going to have to stand up and support a budget that administration recommends. And it will require, as Martin said, a, a level of detail that demonstrates that we are justifying investments in the entire budget to, you know, to a pretty finite level. Other board comments?
Really, just a second to that. I would just hate to see us pass up opportunities if there are opportunities to really add something that does significantly improve what we're doing, simply because we were so fearful of what the final number was going to be. So, yeah, I don't, it made me a little nervous to hear we're not adding anything this year. I don't have anything specific in mind, but we just need to, as Elizabeth said, just make sure that we're not passing up opportunities that, for us to do something better or do something that's necessary to stay competitive and to stay where we are moving forward.
Steve?
Two thoughts, and I think they're related. One is just to echo your, your statement that we need to be communicating this to the public, I think, as soon as possible, you know, to wit, if we don't spend another dollar, taxes are still going to go up over 5%. And at what point are we confident? I understand, John, that you're kind of running some scenario analysis, but that sort of seems to be the story. 8% looks like a 5.2-something percent increase in the tax rate, period, to try to, you know, sensitize folks to that. And I think the second question, and you know, this is just my inability to sort of follow the math, but can we explain in layperson's terms, what is happening? That, I mean, just to look at this, if we were to cut $3 million from the budget, that might result in no increase in taxes. Where's that $3 million going? Where's it going? Is it that we have, you know, fewer people that we're raising the tax from? So we just have to have more people kicking in, or fewer people kicking in more money to raise the same amount? Or is that money leaving our community? What, what's happening?
And this brings up a topic that I, I haven't ever really sat down to try to actually do it. But I've been thinking about this since before I was on the board, that we need some kind of primer for the community. This is, this is how education funding works. And Elizabeth and I were asked this down with the SBBA and explained this. And even to, to folks who, you know, have thought about it a lot, it's still very confusing. How do these rates get set? How does money flow from the communities to the state? How does it then get apportioned back out to the communities? Because I remember hearing this the year that I was running. The last time, you know, I, I understand that we send $4 million more dollars to the state than we give back to our community. And that's not actually the case, but it's a very confusing path about how money flows. path about how money flows. And I, I think, I'd be happy to raise my hand to try to make some sense out of that, based on what I've learned, but I will need some, you know, support, obviously, from, probably from Martin and John and, and David, to make sure that it's, it's correct. But I do feel like we need, like, just a few pages with pictures and with some real clear, frankly, for the boards as well, to really dig in and, and understand where all the levers are and what we can control and what we cannot control, and what happens, in a broader sense, what happens as our community changes. So that's what we were getting asked by the SBBA. They're really thinking of it from the perspective of where do we invest money? How do we develop South Burlington as a community? What do we need to do in reaction to how education is funded in the state? And I think that's fair for, for residents as well, not just the business people in South Burlington. And I think that that is something that really probably needs to be put out around the same time that we're putting out the budget, so that people really get a sense of it. Because there was so much confusion about that last year, and I think that really contributed a lot to the problems that we, we had in getting a budget passed.
I, I did do a, a flowchart kind of description last budget season about where the money went, and I think it helped. And I could certainly, I could certainly bring that back, and we could look at it again.
Yep.
Try to refresh it and, and kind of make it a little more clear, if possible. But it is a very complex system.
Yeah.
There's, there's kind of a macro answer, and there's a micro answer. One of the macro elements that I just found about in the last few weeks, which I'm surprised and ashamed I didn't know about it sooner, but apparently, within the last budgetary season, the state decided to use about $8 million of money from the Ed Fund to offset retirement expense. So that, that used to be a state general fund obligation.
Mm-hmm.
And now, it's, it's part of the Ed Fund, so the property tax, and, and in a sense, has to raise that money. Even though no school district in the state is spending $8 million more, the Ed Fund had to raise that much more money. So that's, that's a kind of a macro thing that statewide, that's a problem. In, in the micro sense, we do raise more tax money nominally than the school district needs in this, in this town, city. That, in a sense, goes to Montpelier and then comes back again. One of the places that comes back to is to, is the prebates, the rebates, the, the income sensitivity payments. So it's not, and, and the piece I did last year showed that money was not going away from a South Burlington, but it was being used within South Burlington to offset people's property tax obligations. So there's, there's a lot of different moving parts to this system. And it's not just that the school district is spending more.
Yeah. Well, the income sensitivity in and of itself is an interesting analysis, because as income sensitivity thresholds have increased, it's diminished the pool available to, to add into the education pool. So if I, somebody becomes income sensitized, their, their actual tax amount has been lowered. Therefore, it, it puts the burden on the other, the others that aren't to, to feed that pool, and there's less, lesser people feeding it. So there's some interesting factors at play. Income sensitivity is one that we've seen go from, within the last four years, five years, go from 90 up to now 145. So people under $145,000 family income are income sensitized. And I don't know what that number's going to be again this year. So you can see what's happening, a little bit of some trend around income and kind of property, property values. More and more people are becoming income sensitized.
So fewer people are being taxed based on their home value.
That's right. Thus, we're, the pressures are being put on a small, at the same time, we have, you know, changing numbers within our, within our, within our, within the month.
It's, yeah.
Yeah. So fewer people to pay into that.
You can just boil that down into some, you know, a half a dozen layperson statements.
Yeah, right, right.
I, I think, you know, that would help this layperson.
Well, we can certainly work on that. It's, it's a good, good highlight, and I think these are some really helpful discussions right now for us. I don't want to say early, but right now for us, so it's really helpful. Appreciate it.
Do we have more to review in the packet here?
No, we ended really with the, with the budget timeline. I think if you see some things on here that you think need to be other thing, I mean, we, we are obviously going to have a lot of other outreach connections that need to happen. We haven't plugged all those in, but I do think, from the board perspective, you may want to be, like, when, when is the right time for another paper article? When do we want to do our, you know, some of the things that happened last year were, were significant in getting the word out. So when, you know, I know, you know, Facebook page and some of those things that came back on were really helpful. Those might be just conversations in there.
And I do know, and that may require that we put communication with the community earlier than we typically do.
Mm-hmm.
So that we're thinking about that. I know we do have a couple of scheduling issues with the December 20th.
Okay.
And the January 10th meeting, I think it is.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if we want to try to resolve those now, but is it possible we could look at the, oh, I noticed there's a possible date for a Citizens Advisory meeting on the 18th Monday?
Mm-hmm.
I was thinking the possibility of moving that 20th meeting to the Monday. Is there, is there a number or a specific period of time that committee meets?
The Citizens Budget Group?
Yeah, is it an hour or two hours?
Uh, we, you know, we never do anything in an hour, never in a half hour. It's usually two hours is probably most realistic, start to stop, so.
Well, a couple thoughts is, I don't, I don't know if the rest of the board wants to weigh in, but, and I, I suspect we might have been looking to schedule additional meetings regardless, but is there a way to move meetings, like, the 10th is a special board meeting, so that could be moved, because it's not dedicated to other board business?
Mm-hmm.
The 20th, is, is that a regular board meeting?
20th?
I think it is. That's Wednesday.
I think it is, yeah.
So perhaps we could do a budget meeting a little bit earlier than that?
Mm-hmm.
Or maybe, maybe have it follow the Citizens Advisory meeting?
Yeah, that's kind of what we've been trying to do, as much as possible, follow, have the board follow, so that the Citizen Budget Group can be en armed to.
Well, I'm saying literally follow it in that particular.
Oh, on that time, sure.
Yeah. Is, is that something the rest of the board would be amenable to, looking at moving up the December date a little bit and moving the January 10th date out a little bit, to accommodate the full board? Because those are, those are particularly meaningful conversations on budget, and it would be good to have the full board.
Because we have, we have issues, to repeat what you have, we have issues with board attendance on the 10th of January, right?
And the 20th of December.
Yeah.
Can I move to the 19th of December? Does it have to move all the way to the?
I, I think it could be.
To give it whatever input, they can incorporate the input from the Citizens Advisory Board the day before?
Mm-hmm.
I think that's, that's a possibility.
Could move it. So the suggestion here is to December 19th, from the 20th?
And, and then is, does the January 10th date sensitive relative to ballot language development? That's the one we always run into.
It is, but I think we have some play in there, but we can, we can check on that. The suggestion on that would be to change the 10th to...
I don't know the day of the week on that, but if it...
That's a Wednesday, the 10th.
Okay, maybe the following Monday? Okay. Do we abide by, does the board abide by all?
Well, that one...
I've looked at the past year. There's no holidays. Or maybe even the Thursday of that?
You mean the 11th?
Is the 11th a possibility?
Yeah, I wouldn't feel it would be there on the 11th.
Okay.
The 12th, I could do, the Friday. But I know Fridays are hard for board meetings.
Fridays are hard.
Yeah.
So maybe the 16th? Well, there, we have a 17th down as a possible, final possible date for school board approval?
Yeah, I think you're going to get jammed with all of the stuff that's going to happen, probably presentation, January 3rd. Usually, we present, we digest, we talk, we come back with slight modifications, we do two or three of those.
Well, should we take that one offline and try to find it? And maybe, maybe that we could shift it to the 16th and, and move the Citizens Advisory?
Earlier, see if they can move it back.
What's a final, do we know a final date certain before the ballot language has to be developed?
Well, I think it's that 17th possible date for school board approval, the 17th of January.
Well, that...
Because we have, we have to send it then to the, you know, both city and school have to send it.
Perhaps we'll leave it on the 10th, and I attend that one remotely, and then the 17th, we have for final approval, since it's already on the calendar, unless you feel like it needs to be.
So we probably need to just firm up the 17th then, as a, as a definitive working date.
Yeah, I'll dig back in on, to see when, you know, what our charter obligation is, but...
Okay. All right. It'd be good to have full board weighing in on that.
So the, so I got, I've got the December...
19th?
19th. And the consensus is to try to find, we want to do away with the January 10th to, and to find something.
Well, maybe we can keep the 10th as a working session if needed.
Okay.
But we need to firm up the 17th then.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, I am the problem on the 10th, and I can't physically be here on the 10th. And I just, for an actual action or vote, I would like to be here for that final vote, if possible. Ideally, I'd be here for a special board meeting dedicated to the budget, but I can do that remotely if I need to.
Yeah. Just, I mean, the 10th, I prefer not to have to be here. I have a Vermont School Board Association meeting that evening.
On the 10th?
On the 10th.
Oh, so you've got a conflict too?
I have, but I will just have to skip out of there early if we're going to keep it on the 10th, but just, for purposes of trying to figure this out.
So we do have two conflicts on the 10th.
Yeah, I mean, I'd prefer to try to make it to that.
Yeah.
Okay.
The 11th is my absolute, no, because it's my travel date back. And so the 11th, I cannot do remotely either, because I wouldn't be in a place to do it on the phone. But the 10th, I could do remotely on the phone.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks.
Anything else on financial planning and budgeting? Public? Yes?
Can I ask a follow-up question? Actually, to that, this is a point I was going to ask. Have we done any further thought or looking into the bond? I know we talked a little bit about that last issue, last time. It actually is interesting, I ran into, at the VSBA meeting, Beth Pierce was there, and I was talking to her about that there's probably going to be a lot of bonds for stewardship across the state. And, and her, her viewpoint, I certainly respect her viewpoint on these things, is, she gave me three factors for why one would want to do this. One is generational equity, which is right in line with what Dave said. The other is, is low interest rates, which is great. We've got those two. I don't remember what the third one was, but, but two out of three, we, we had as far as her.
And it was much more eloquent. Generational equity is much better than the way I expressed it.
Asset liability matching, I'm guessing.
That was probably, yeah. Whatever it was, it was not actually important to her.
So let me just say that when we, next meeting, we will bring back, and in the stewardship plan, we will have identified items, at least in first draft, what we think needs to remain in the operating budget. Those are things that we know are kind of the immediate needs of facilities. But then we'll also have some suggestions of what you'll be able to weigh in on, where we think we need to go out and have a consideration for a bond to do that. And again, as, as Martin said, part of the bonding is, it's generally a 20-year period, but things that are going to have a useful life of 20 years or more, those are appropriate items, we think, to bond for, because it does, as, as Martin more eloquently said, the generational, you know, spectrum, it does allow for everyone to pay for that equally across those years, as opposed to it only loading on the, you know, the folks that are here today with, with children in the system or not in the system. So we're going to come back with some suggestions to you. I think we're, we're not, we're in a place right now where we've had some things identified on the stewardship plan at the high school, for instance, that we don't, they, they could have been well positioned, but we're not yet there, because we haven't done all of the things we need to do on the mechanical structure, electrical. We're moving on that, but we're, we're not there, so it doesn't make a lot of sense to invest a lot of big dollars in bonding energy until we have a more definitive plan. So that said, we, we still think there's some things in there that are viable. So you'll see that next meeting. Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, and one of the things the board did ask at the last meeting was, we eliminated 1.2 million out of the budget, which was approved, so we did want some reconciliation of those items that had been eliminated, and how they're going to either be reintroduced or why they're being, continue to be deferred, for whatever reason, in this current budget. All right? All right.
I was going to say, just a small point, but with respect to the, you know, if the bond bank does 20-year bonds, that's just a statutory.
Right.
Maybe they sometimes do 30. But when you're looking at the average life of the projects, the tax analysis actually lets you look at the average of the average lives. So just because something maybe has a seven-year sort of useful life.
Don't, don't knock.
If you've got some 30-year stuff, it, yeah, so, you know, you don't want to be concentrated on the shorter stuff, but, but you can actually, I'm just saying, you're not precluded from doing exclusively really, really long-lived offsets like capital project buildings.
Nice. Thanks.
Good. We're off schedule now.
All right.
So we will move on to Agenda Item 9, executive limitations policy. We have three policy monitoring reports here. Want to kick us off here?
Yeah. So why don't we, we'll, we'll kind of go in the order in which they're on there. So 2.4, financial conditions. This is continued financial conditions and activities, which was continued from the previous. That may not be the way it is in your packet, but it's, it's the way it is on the agenda. So John, do you want to?
Yeah, the last time we talked about this, there was some confusion around Detail Policy Number 1. So I, I gave a, I'm giving a different schedule from the audit report from FY '16 year-end, hopefully to try to clarify some of that conclusion, confusion. And I've redone the, the chart on, immediately on this page 2 of 11, that I see didn't print real well, but we'll try to make sense out of it anyway. So the Detail Policy 1 says that we're not supposed to expend more funds that have been received or budgeted in the, in the fiscal year. So that says to me that we either have to stay within our budget, or we have to stay within our revenues. So if you turn to Exhibit 1, you'll see a, a schedule from the FY '16 audit. We don't have the FY '17 audit done yet. They're supposed to arrive here next week, I think, to do the fieldwork for that. But for the FY '16 audit, I've circled a couple of numbers here, and maybe kind of highlight your, your attention on the actual amounts column for this Schedule 1, Exhibit 1. The, the school district began the '15, '16 year with a fund balance of $2,272,196. It took in $46,766,836 in income. So that income was $812,434, greater than budget. The budget was 45.9 million. We received actually, in, in current year income, 46.7 million. On the expense side of the budget, we overspent the budget in '15, '16 by $398,795. The budget was 44.4 million. We expended 44.8 million. And most of that expenditure was in special education. In fact, showing on this sheet here, special education was over-expended by $658,000. The, so that if we were relying on not overspending the budget, we would have failed this Detail Policy. But in fact, we, we, we have the other part of this policy that says we should not over-expend income. So that as we had $46.7 million worth of income and $44.8 million worth of expense, we... we had 1.8 million dollars of a annual year's budgetary fund balance. So that, that I think makes it so that we did meet the, the detailed policy number one. And I will, I will grant you, that's a confusing presentation. Yeah, I think it's made more complicated by the fact that we're required by state law, absent any other local action to the contrary, to use up all our fund balance from the two years prior every fiscal year. So that, for example, at the end of FY 17, we had a fund balance that was undesignated. We automatically have to use up that fund balance in preparing the FY 19 budget. So that our revenues for the, the FY 19 year will be budgeted at less than our expenses, if you follow that. So it's, you're, you have to overcome a little bit of a hurdle to, to make your revenues exceed your budget. Because you have, your, your stated current year revenues are always less than your expenditure budget, if you can follow that a little bit. You're puzzled, Steve.
No, I'm, I'm just going to try to again, read it back in layperson's terms. You have to treat two years ago surplus as a revenue source.
Right.
You have no discretion.
Unless you have a, a district meeting vote to the contrary.
Right, that authorizes the, authorizes that, how to spend that money.
You, you can't simply let, you don't, you couldn't, I mean, it used to be the case. A lot of districts would let their fund balances grow from year to year and it was a good cushion and they could use it for various stuff. But with, with, a law came in several years ago that you're supposed to buy down that, that two years prior fund balance. Not the immediate next year, because you, you don't know it in time, but the following year's budget. So that in each year, you're burning up some of that, that fund balance you finished with.
All right, and is there any statutory provision to?
Yes.
In your expenditures to expend funds on building reserves or carry forward? Okay.
Yes. If, if the district meeting votes to say, put 300,000 of unexpended fund balance at year end into a reserve fund to offset special education or offset building projects or offset health insurance premiums, you know, you can do that. But not, not a lot of school districts have done that. This school district, to my knowledge, has not done that. You could do that if you wanted to, but absent any, any language like that, you have to use up that following, the following year, the fund balance you had left over from two years prior. You could talk about that. That's a, it's, a lot of people fund their capital reserve funds with, with fund balance.
I guess that's what I was saying.
Vote it in.
I'm gonna get out of, quickly out over my skis, but, so that's, that's unrestricted fund balance. You can transfer it to plant fund balance?
If, if you have a, a district meeting vote.
Vote.
With a vote, okay, with a vote, all right.
Has to be approved.
And, and do you have any other restricted funds, like there?
The only one that's really restricted in this entity is the capital reserve fund that we created in 16, 17.
All right.
And that's $300,000 and, and it's supposed to be used only with board approval for maintenance reserve items.
It's covered in detail three.
All right.
Policy three.
So I tried to replicate a little bit this, this audit schedule with my own creation. That's on page two, for the FY 17 year end, the year we just finished. And, and I think if we can follow this, even though the format of the print is kind of difficult. We began the FY 17 year with a fund balance of 1,894,718. We, we received in current year income, 45,748,700. We used this past year, 1,003, 1,00341,283 from the prior year's fund balance to, to offset tax requirements. So that the, um, the, um, current year's revenue surplus was 1,532,843. We actually received 1,500,000 more income than we thought we would, than we budgeted. Coming down to expenditures, line five, we budgeted 45,561,810 for expenditures and we spent 46,513,308. So we spent 951,000 more in expenditures during FY 17. That was again primarily for special ed. I think it's, when we get the audit, we'll find it was entirely special education. So that the, the current year's income of 1,532 exceeded the current year's expenditure overage of 951 by almost $600,000, 576,053.
Yeah, I think it's written backwards though, isn't it? In, in point number two up above the chart, it says that expenditures exceeded revenues by 576. Isn't it actually the other way around? Revenues exceeded expenditures.
Oops.
Yeah.
Yep. You're right.
And it, it doesn't really fit in the way you've sort of laid out the chart, but in, you know, it, the way I think about this is, you know, how do we do excluding, you know, what we were taking out of reserves? You know, how do we do just, you know, revenues, other revenues versus expenses? So my calculation was that we, that sort of, I guess the simple way of doing it would be to sort of net off that, you know, we had an additional extra 200,000 or so in revenue, but we were minus 951. So we actually expenditures exceeded revenues. If you're ignoring the, the draw from the beginning fund balance by $765,000 or so.
Yes.
And so my question was heading into, well, for this year, you know, are we, is there enough there? If, if we're still, if, if we have another year like that where we're expending more than we budgeted?
More than we budgeted.
Because that's a pretty big difference and it's, it's bigger than, you know, what we've got in there in terms of reserves for future years. So that was, that was the first question, because it, if you just look at this from a business person's perspective, not factoring in, you know, all the stuff you know about how state law works and all that, it looks like this is unsustainable. It looks like we're drawing down a reserve.
You would never, you would never run a private business like this.
Right.
You would never burn up 1,003 in, in shareholders equity and be happy about it. But in our environment, this is what we're required to do by state law. We need to use that 1,00341 to reduce the amount of tax levy we take in. And that means almost every year, you're going to have a revenue deficit. Almost every year, you're going to have a revenue deficit where the current year revenues you expect are less than the current year expenditures you're proposing. So don't be, don't be dismayed if your current year revenues are less than current year expenditures. It's by design. It's not.
I'm not to say by that, because this, I understand that this goes into a revenue source, basically. I, I get that. My concern is this big number of 951 that was different than what we expected, that expenditures were almost a million dollars more than we were expecting.
That's up from the prior year.
Yes, and that's my concern.
There's certainly, there's certainly, I would, I didn't develop this, the seven, the 16, 17 budget. I wasn't here for the pressures. Certainly, maybe it should have been a million dollars higher on the expense side. Or maybe we should have entertained a million dollars less programs. But I think what happened in 16, 17 is you got hit with some very severe special education cases and some caseload issues that forced, and some out-of-district placements that forced expenditures beyond your control. And I don't think anybody, at least in my experience with schools, is willing to reduce other programs, regular ed programs, regular ed teachers, athletics, art, whatever have you, to, to offset the cost of increasing special education expenses. Especially in light of the fact that the state will usually reimburse those excess expenditures by between 56 and 90%.
Right.
So it's like, it's okay that your special ed goes over because you're going to get income to offset it. And, and I know that's a tough sell if you think the budget bottom line is sacrosanct, but that's, that's the way it works. And, and I will say that, that the 1,00341 was a, was a very high number for, for a fund balance. I, I found that to be, I was astonished. I thought when we finished that year, when we, when we started that year, that, that number was big. And I still think it was big. I think your typical fund balance at, at, for your place should be between 1 and 2%. And the fund balance we're going into FY 19 with, this 612,000 is just over 1%. So I think that's a, that's a realistic fund balance to end the year with. The 1,00341, if you can, if you were to do that year over year, I would say you're, you're budgeting way too conservatively. Or, or you're having some really fantastic good luck in your expenditure side, because that's a big number, 1,00341.
Well, another, another quick question though is that rows eight and nine don't seem to match what's in bullet point two on page eight. So it says because the FY proposed budget targeted 553,435 as a carryover revenue source for FY 18. Where they have 516,901. I'm just confused where the difference in those numbers comes from.
I'm sorry, where?
So page two versus page eight. So we're looking at the last two rows of page two versus page eight. Bullet point two. So I would expect bullet point two.
Bullet point two or number two?
Well, number two.
Okay.
Number two, down at the bottom. I'm, I'm sorry, there are two different number twos. I'm talking about the numbers in the very last number two on the page. I would have expected that that number, that 553,435 would have read 516,901. And the difference, 576,053, will be available for carryover revenue for the FY 19 budget. I would have expected that to match the 612,587.
Yeah, I've got, I've got something worded wrongly here somewhere. I'll have to figure that out. The 576,503, I think is the carryover to next year's budget.
Five, five, three.
Let me, let me, I'm sorry, I.
That's okay. I, no, I just, I just, it just seemed like these should match and I, and I wasn't understanding why they didn't match and if there was something I wasn't understanding about this chart. Is what I was trying to ask in a not very articulate way.
I know the, I know you had an odd entry in your, yeah, here it is. It's in there.
Steve, did you have a question?
No, it's not.
I do, I want to wait for John to finish his thought.
No, I, I lost it now that I got rid of that other schedule.
This one, my sense is this one is going to be tabled because there's already some revisions here. So why don't we just clarify additional questions and we can move on to the next one?
Okay, so just as a starting point, John, let's assume that 576,000 is the starting fund balance for this year. What, what do you do? I think you already said this. Do you, do we have to set the tax rate lower to absorb that? How, how do we?
You set the tax rate lower to absorb that. What happens is?
How do we, how do we burn it?
Factored into the?
Less other revenue?
It's factored into your budget worksheet.
It's just another revenue source. Just think of it as another revenue source in this year's budget.
Okay, all right.
And we have to report that to the state June 1st of 18 for the 19 budget before we know what our audited fund balance is. So you can't, you can't report the exact number. You have to report an estimated number.
Just thinking fortuitously, I guess what worries me is, you know, let's say you have a windfall from two years ago. You have to build that into your budget and expend it. Aren't you baking in a structural deficit?
You're baking in a stru, a revenue deficit.
You're baking in volatility in your tax rate, I guess.
Yes.
Right, that's, which is consistent with your.
It would be better from my point of view, if you had a fund balance.
Right, just carry a fund balance.
Enough of that fund balance to kind of stabilize your tax rate.
Absolutely.
Not use this whole 1,00341 in one year.
This is a recipe for volatility.
To plunge your tax rate and then not be able to make it up in the following year.
Representative alone, do we have any, Bill Frieda, okay.
Can I make one more comment on this?
Alex?
Well, the, the first line, expend more, the superintendent shall not expend more funds than have been received or budgeted in the fiscal year to date. Right now, our interpretation of that is you have a, you have a choice. You have the, it's an or. You have budgeted or received as your maximum for the amount that you can say.
That's how I read that.
If I were to, if I were to take this and code it, I would, I would code it as an and, just because of the way it's worded. So the way I read this, it's, it, my interpretation is that you cannot expend more than has been received and you cannot spend more than has been, than has been budgeted.
I didn't write this policy.
Oh, yeah, well, I, I think.
I think it says or.
Oh, I think, I know, it says or, but I, you can interpret it that way, but I think to close off the, the openness for interpretation.
Well, I think it should be.
It's worth rewriting it.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, it should be clarified. I, I have read this before and interpreted it to be received or budgeted.
Right.
And, and the, the mere fact that we may have volatility by, I'm just gonna, students that move into our district, we need to, we need to provide the education. So we need to add the extra teacher. The budget has to exceed, but will, as a result of truing up on the other end, it, it will be, it will be made up on the, on the other side of that, so.
Exactly. I, I agree with that.
A better example might be a tuition student, right?
Yeah.
So five more tuition students come, we added another teacher that exceeds the expenditure side, but the revenue increased to offset it.
Yeah, it exactly, and FY 17 is the, the perfect example because we had more special ed, but we also had more revenues.
I don't know, it's probably worth clarifying.
I, I think.
My interpretation is similar to yours, Alex, which is that's a combined sentence. It's either or. I, I mean, I'm sorry, not either or, it's, it has to meet both those criteria.
Right, I mean, yeah, the word or is in there, but the, if you, you could, you could, it's open to interpretation and it shouldn't be open to interpretation.
Based on what we have done, just our monitoring reports in the past or our audits, are you saying that we would, we're satisfying that? And that the end result, we have either brought in more revenue to offset expenditure, or are you saying we would not comply? Because we overspent on the expenditure side.
I, I, yeah, I think we comply with the intent, but I think you can reasonably argue that this sentence says that you cannot spend more than you've received and you cannot spend more than, than's been budgeted. So I, I would, if possible, I would like to rewrite this sentence to say something to the effect of not expend more funds than have been received or has been budgeted.
This, the, a rewrite is, we can bring it up in the context of the, a future adjustment in the interpretation, which really comes from David.
Yeah, and we can find out.
But we, but in terms of this current action, we need to evaluate it within this context.
Yeah, that's right.
So we can note that there's been a discussion about that issue and, and bring it up. I, I would highlight the, the variability and the trending upward variability or variance on the special ed. I mean, 658 and then 951 on a $10 million budget is a lot.
Telling a pretty significant story, right?
Well, I, I guess the point is, what is the story and how do we share that with the public?
Share the specific data in which we're seeing that's associated with what I said earlier around kind of the trauma component, which is in part driving up, you know, driving our responses up, you know, to get a handle on it, to clear, I mean, the data's there. That we're, more and more information's coming out around the trauma, the ACEs events that are happening, and it's significant across the state. That doesn't mean it's only special ed, but typically it's highly correlated to, to special ed. So the story is, what are we going to do as a state to, to help remedy proactively that trend? And there is a lot, there is a lot of work going on, on that, but I don't know that we're going to see the, you know, the rewriting or the stabilization of that in, in anytime soon. That's going to be a pretty significant issue this year, I think, across the state.
Any, so let me just check for the board real quick. Any other board comments?
On this whole?
This policy?
Uh, page four, uh, 25,000 was donated under the spirit fund, not.
Page five?
Yeah.
Missing a, you're missing a zero.
Four, page four. There's a, a top.
You're missing a zero on that, see that fourth paragraph?
Yeah, it's missing a zero.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, I mean, I'm interested in some of the trauma related to the opioid crisis.
Correct.
And then perhaps tying it more clearly that for the community would be helpful, because I think everybody in the office is really familiar with that.
That's nice.
And, but maybe not how, how much it's affected kids in schools. And, but maybe not how much it's affected kids in schools.
Yeah, that's what I'm struggling with a little bit, too. I'm glad you brought that up, because that was one last thing I was going to say. I get that there's a lot of data going on, on a statewide, but is there a way, though, as part of the budget process, we can understand that nine fifty-one? And how much of it is trauma versus other?
Other, other.
This is still huge to me. There's sort of a hand waving about it's special ed, you know, the six, sixty of special ed, you know, overage. How was that broken down and why did it happen? And so, so that we can have some sense of why it may or may not happen again this year and, and how to budget appropriately for that.
And if it's going to improve, because the state's really trying to address that crisis.
Right, right, right.
Well, we can, we certainly can break down that, certainly that trend and that number is large. So understanding kind of the buckets that are within that and not all pointing it necessarily or necessarily to, you know, to trauma. But there are other categories that, that are worthy of conversation.
And let me just, you know, not go too far on the whole trauma issue, but, but the alcohol and drug abuse is actually not the biggest cause of, of what they consider to be a trauma event for children. It's actually poverty is, is one, and divorce is the second. Those are the two highest, with twenty-three, twenty-four percent of those children who suffer trauma have had that as one of the experiences. Whereas drug and alcohol abuse are, is like fourteen percent. Yeah, it's just, just understand when we're talking trauma, it's not just about opiate abuse or, or alcohol abuse. It's a recognition relatively recently of the negative effects on, on the developing brain of suffering from these various traumatic events, so.
All right, shall we move on to the two point three?
So this is Treatment of Community. And we, this is coming back to you a second time. And some of the changes have been so noted, but it's been mostly a rewrite to kind of put bullets, that's not the right word, but just categorize a little bit more clearly around some of the evidence that's there. And again, so this, this first one is Treatment of, with respect to the Treatment of Community, shall not fail to recognize that community members are the owners of school programs and facilities and such are afforded, and again, appropriate participation in school programs, appropriate input to significant decisions and the use of facilities. So I've outlined in evidence those components, some examples. I'm not being totally inclusive of all, but I've listed those in there. There was one thing that we did change. It's really the policies and procedures. We dropped the, those guidelines out. As you get to page three of four, this is under the, some of the decisions specific to monitoring issues around master planning and visioning. And those were, again, as we said earlier, were really not part of this most current work. That's certainly there. We've taken that out. So I don't, I mean, I can continue to read on some of those things, but tried to provide some, just the specific examples and pieces of evidence to Treatment of Community.
I thought this was a good update from last time.
Yep.
There are some things in here. Page three of four has that contingency plan, which we're going to get to in Master Planning and Visioning by December thirty-first of seventeen. You know, some of those dates, I, I didn't change them because.
We haven't changed them.
We haven't changed them, but I know that that's, that's a topic that will come up shortly.
Any other board comments? This is one I still struggle with where the wellness falls in with Treatment of Community. Because this seems, even the policies and procedures are really staff and student focused.
In regards to wellness?
Yeah.
Specific, right?
Yeah, I just don't understand the emphasis on that and the, the attachment as attachment one is a specific example.
It's probably loose, but I mean, I, I think things that we do in the school do have carryover to the public. And, you know, when we have events that are happening, you know, I think it's a, it's something that I think is important around wellness. We have mentors that come into our building. I think they participate in some of those same things. So I think omitting them is the, omitting, omitting that is a not. I just felt like it was appropriate. But I, I mean, I'm, I'm fine.
Yeah, I mean, it's okay to include it, but as the one example is an attachment, it just.
Yeah, I agree.
Seems like an overemphasis on one.
Right, over one attachment, that's fair.
I mean, I think, I think the key is that, that the Wellness Committee includes community members, right?
Yep. But I, I don't disagree with you, Elizabeth. It's like, why, why that one and not another attachment?
I still think we should approve this one tonight.
Are we ready to review this?
I am.
All right, let me grab the official document. Okay, this is two point three, Treatment of Community. And I'll just do a quick read on this. We don't have any subpolicies, right?
No.
Bullet points. So this is with respect to the Treatment of the Community. The superintendent shall not fail to recognize that community members are the owners of the school programs and facilities and as such are afforded appropriate participation in school programs, appropriate input in significant decisions and the use of facilities. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
Yep.
In compliance?
Yes.
All right. That is reviewed. So move on to Treatment of Staff.
Soon as I can find it.
You need it?
Maybe. No, I got it. Sorry. Okay, so Treatment of Staff. I think this is the first time we're seeing this one. So specific to Detail Policy One, operate without written personnel rules, clarifying and defining the rules, rights and responsibilities. I've made an interpretation, these conditions are, and I've gone through nepotism, you know, preferential treatment, et cetera. You can read those bullet points. The evidence side is similar to the way we've done this in the past. The highlighted are areas that we've updated or changed. So I'm on page two of nine. It walks through the different employee groups that we have, from teachers on the left side to central office administrators on the right. And those highlighted change, for instance, in the district staff, we've completed the Schools Out Facilities and Special Ed Department, as well as our common staff with a handbook. Again, the, we've highlighted some things in here around our website. And again, a lot of those have not changed, that are again, not highlighted. Policy, Detail Policy Two, discriminate against any staff member for non-disruptive expression of dissent. This was reworked a little bit from the last time. Actually, not from the last time you saw it, but just from my interpretation. I've added, has no impact on students or on impact in the classroom. Again, this is specific to expression of dissent. I'm on page three of nine.
Can you add it to the beginning?
What's that? What?
Can you add it, I T to the?
Oh, to, yeah, sure. And then in the evidence, that employees have been provided the procedure, the policies and procedures, Central Office Team is currently working on and reviewing and updating district policies and procedures. And some of that, you're seeing that come before you. Detail Policy Three, fail to acquaint staff with their protections under the policy. Again, we've worked hard, my staff have to provide more information that's available online and updated and guidelines specific to co-curricular, some of the things that we've, we've, we've updated or changed. Detail Policy Four, allow staff to be unprepared or to deal with emergencies. Again, the evidence here is some of the crises information that we've dealt with on Attachment Two. And that we've recorded some of those specific examples that you see in the, in that attachment. Detail Policy Five, fail to create a positive organizational climate conducive to achieving the ends. I interpret this to mean that staff feels informed and supported in services that they provide. And then some of the items, again, that have an evidence that has been provided are here. Again, I've added new, the Master Planning and Visioning from the last time this was done. And this is in part, I think, connected to the, you know, how we continue to be a organization that can work to meet our ends. Page six of nine, again, that's just a continuation of kind of the listed components of evidence. Page seven of nine, chart shows some of the information specific to grievances. Again, these are ways in which people can provide feedback, concerns and, and a response through our process as listed. Detail Policy Six, neglect to provide meaningful and timely performance evaluations. And in this specific area, I've highlighted again, some of our ongoing work that was recommended from the last time we did this and also from the ongoing work that was initially provided by a deeper look. This is an area that we're not currently in, in, in compliance. We still have some outstanding evaluations that have been there. And then I've got a, how that we, we're going to bring that particularly back into compliance. So I, I can go through, again, Attachment One was the, was the guidelines. And let me just pause there and it was kind of really, really, really quick, but.
I have a few questions.
Mm-hmm.
Detail Policy number four.
Page four?
Yeah, page four.
Mm-hmm.
I, I know one does not want to release what our crisis team does.
Yeah.
That's, but should there be any more details of, of, you know, what the crisis team had to deal with? For instance, when the, we had the shutdown, the, what's that called again, the full?
Yeah, my response of lockdown.
The lockdown, thank you, yeah, the lockdown. I mean, should, should it at least, yeah, I understand it's been handled accordingly, but I kind of like to understand that we had these three incidents where we actually had to have our crisis team respond and what those incidents are. I don't think that that reveals anything about crisis planning, which I, I understand we can't have that being public.
Yeah.
But I think understanding what may have happened is an important detail as part of the evidence.
Just listing those, those specific, those events.
Yeah, these are the times where we actually had to use, you know, the planning procedures in process. So that was the question I had, that one.
Yep.
The page, oh, I'm sorry.
Just a quick one on that.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
It might be appropriate to identify the, at, at least the frequency or number of times there was a prep or training session, too, because I think those are held pretty frequently.
In the past, I've given you the calendar, I think, but, you know, I think the last time we did it, I gave you the calendar or the, kind of our mapped out of our events, yeah. Okay?
I guess one other further item on that issue, I know that, got to be six years ago, we, we did an inspection of what is done with the crisis team, since we can't reveal that kind of planning. And I'm wondering if that's something we should think about doing again. I, I just raised that. I did it that time and I essentially went and sat in on.
Crisis team meeting.
Crisis team meeting and I don't think it's, I don't think it's critical, but, but I just raised that.
I think that's appropriate, you can, a direct inspection kind of thing. It's, I think that's appropriate if that's an area that, I think, I, I think it's good.
Anybody interested in doing that?
For an interest?
Yeah. I, I don't think.
We have one coming up. I'll invite someone to a, one of our upcoming meetings.
It was pretty interesting to, to see. I think it is helpful if somebody has the time to do that. I don't think, let's not make it a requirement.
Do you want to, you want to send out what, when the?
Sure. I think when we come back, though, I can give the calendar of our meetings. And those are, we have school-specific meetings and then we have a public safety meeting. The next one we have coming up, I think, is a public safety meeting. And then individual schools have those event, they have, they have, they may have them on their own, too. But we, we ensure that we at least get to each site two or three times each. And we have a two or three public, public, public safety meetings, which involves, you know, city, fire, et cetera. It's good, I can bring that back. And maybe when I bring the calendar back, that could be a place where anyone, and again, it is open. I open it up to, you know, public safety folks, but certainly could have it available to, to you guys as well.
So next question I had was on Policy Five. It's perhaps a small question. On page seven, for the grievances, two thousand seventeen to nineteen, it says zero. Is that, is that right?
Two thousand seventeen, this, right now?
Seventeen to two thousand nineteen? We haven't had any new ones this year, essentially. We're talking this school year or this calendar year?
Trying to recalibrate a little bit, right? Can I start with zero somewhere?
Well, you, you can. I was just wondering, I was just questioning whether that was correct or not.
Well, I think that, I think that. I think it could be one.
I thought, I thought, I thought there was a grievance, that's why I was.
Just trying to, you know, recalibrate, start.
Given that you put a subject in a category, it's probably at least one.
Well, that's the other, yeah, that was the other flag that kind of suggested there may be one.
Yeah, I got it.
Actually, it's smaller than the page before that, on page six, it says there's an established mentor program. Specifically, there's an established mentor program for teachers, right?
Correct.
I would just be more specific, because in some of these, we're talking about all staff, and that was quite a big discussion. Having negotiations with support staff, that there is not a formal mentor program for support staff, but there is for teachers. So I would just add for teachers on that bullet point.
At the top of the page there, it should say, the third bullet point.
Third bullet point.
There's an established teacher mentor program.
Yeah.
Just to make it clear.
Thank you.
So here's my biggest one, is Policy number six. And, gosh, it has to be four years ago now, Elizabeth, that we, we got an outside audit of, because we weren't allowed to look ourselves at how the teacher evaluations were done. And since that time, I know there were some recommendations, but also there have been changes that you highlight here. And I just think, understanding that our evaluation, teacher evaluation system, not just the numbers, but that it is a, a working system, really is a structural component of how we are, are running.
No question.
The district. And I think that's one that, that needs to have some form of scrutiny by the school board, but we can't do it directly. And, and the question is whether we want to, once again, start thinking about digging down a little deeper. And I'm kind of asking Elizabeth as much as anything on this, because you were familiar with the, and the rest of the board wasn't here when we went, went through that issue.
Yeah, I'm actually, I was actually surprised. This is the first I'm seeing of a revised evaluation system. So given that there were specific recommendations made, that I don't think there's been a ton of follow-up on how those were implemented and that there's been a specific decision to pilot something new. This does seem like it's appropriate to kind of refresh what, what revisions the pilot was intending, or what improvements the pilot was intending to introduce to the system and kind of how that's going. And then maybe that would result in another assessment as needed.
Well, you know, it's a, it's a, I think, we've, we've been using the Danielson rubric and some, and this is foreign to some of you. They don't, you don't know what that necessarily means, but it's a rubric. It has four domains from instructional practice, professional responsibilities, instruction. Each one of those have subcomponents and they, that's how really, that's the, that's the, that's really the most important components for us in providing this meaningful feedback. Based on the study. Based on the study, the Marshall work that we did, we've, we've stayed with and enhanced the Danielson work, and worked hard with the administrators to recognize, you know, what are some of the meaningful and calibrated tenants of evaluation. So we continue to work on that. I think our, our most difficult area is, you know, again, getting them, getting them completed in the, in the most meaningful way. Again, we can comply with the, with the component if we just do one visit, but we're wanting to do more than that, right? We're wanting to do, it's a series of things. At the same time, we get information, you know, we have changing staff, that puts some complexity on the system. We need to figure that out. You know, we need to figure that out, there's no question. And that may be that, you know, for the new teachers, it's unacceptable that we can think, you know, at a school, you have twenty, that's an exaggeration, just general, twenty new staff, and you're going to get all those first-year evaluations, and you have to call on some other resources to get it done. So we have to figure that out. We're, I'm reporting non-compliance, and we have to figure out how we can ensure that we're, we're getting that done for everyone. Some of the non-compliance issues are that we didn't evaluate some people that we knew were not going to be returning. Kind of a, that doesn't mean that they shouldn't be provided, you know, information if they're retiring or moving on, but it's about kind of appropriate deductive decision-making on our part to say, do we need to? We've got new staff, we need to make sure that these folks are being done appropriately that way. So, that said, we have to figure it out, and Stuart and I, again, curriculum and myself, we need to make sure that we're, you know, we're kind of the calibrators, the leaders to say, this is, this is critical that we're paying attention to this. What are you seeing here? What are you seeing here? As we get those back. So this is, is ongoing.
So maybe it's a little premature to do another audit right now, since there's just the pilot, but we should have it on our radar.
Maybe I misread, is the pilot just started, or did it get completed last year?
No, this is just started.
Yeah, yeah. I kind of misunderstood that one.
But I will say, I mean, if you look at your comment around reporting policy violation, there's almost as many teachers that are out of cycle as were completed. So I assume there's another, you know, whatever, ten to fifteen, that were already in the seventeen, eighteen evaluation cycle. So that's the ten or fifteen plus the twelve. So how, I mean, how will?
Catching, or getting that.
Basically, 200% of your required group be accommodated differently? Or does it become a rolling?
It does. It's not, I understand what you're saying, but it's not, it doesn't, it's not compounding. I think that's what you're.
There are twelve, we caught up all the twelve out of the ones that we did, between the ones who left and.
Right.
The ones that were done. So it's not that we got them all, but there were, whatever, I think it says five, twelve, what was it? Through the retirements, I can't find the wording right now, but through the retirements and so resignations, we are only twelve out of cycle.
Twelve are now out of cycle, right? And they need to be added to the seventeen, eighteen. But you're right, you're not wrong in that it compounds itself.
Right.
So, you know, you add twelve.
It isn't the order of magnitude, though.
No, that's right.
The pieces, getting past the seventy-five, seventy-eight.
That's the baseline number.
Of our own capacity, that seems to be the problem, getting over that, that pump. So I have to tell you that the high school worked very hard to catch up, and that's where most of the catch-up happened.
So a future year, in a couple of years, maybe start talking about doing an audit again?
Well, it might, it might be helpful at some point to consider a discussion of the pilot, even if there's no results to it, just what was it intended?
Yeah.
Put it in our future.
Yeah, I don't think that would be bad for the board to see, a little bit more of a deeper dive of the Danielson, and how, you know, the subcomponents, and how the power of the rubric really works to provide meaningful information. So, yeah, it's fine.
A small comment about administrative evaluations around the four-year cycle. So administrators only get reviewed every four years?
They do goals every year, actually, and I, I pretty much, and again, this is a little bit of the work that's currently going on, so I've got work going on with central office folks with me, under the FYI, or the 360-degree evaluation tool, or feedback tool, I should say, we're currently working on that right now. So, a four-year cycle that you'll be three, you'll get, if you're a brand-new administrator, you're going to have some support and coaching, mentoring, you're going to be provided with a 360 evaluation, that get feedback that comes from all of your constituencies, that you're in, you're in evaluation, first year and fourth year, but then you're coached along the way, and you have some goals that you meet. Currently, what I, what I've been doing is essentially evaluating every year. It's goals, it's evaluation, and my evaluation is typically done based on the job description and the essential functions of the job. And then I provide them with, with feedback, and then suggested growth opportunities. And I do that based on, you know, kind of the, the work that they've done, or the things that I think they can grow in.
Does that need to be captured in here somewhere, even if it's not a formal policy, or, because if you were just to read this code, it would feel like perhaps you're only checking in with administrators every four years, and that's kind of surprising.
I think, that's reasonable. We're, we're in the process of really putting some additional clarity to that, right now.
But certainly in terms of this report, which is based on the actual, something disappointing, you know, I don't have.
Thank you, Stuart. Okay.
Any other comments on this?
We just had one other thing you, it was the Danielson or the pilot, right?
Danielson and Marshall pilot, yeah. So should we add this for, this was the first reading, so we'll add it for an updated reading?
Yeah.
All right. Are any other, any questions from the public? All right, we'll move on to agenda, item 10, master planning and visioning.
So, I'm going to just hand you this, a little bit of an update on this one. Sorry, I should have read through. And some coming that way, just one. It's a front and back page. Thank you. I think there's some extras that folks can, let's take one, John and Pat, yeah, thank you. So, this is just to give a little bit of an, exactly what is on the agenda, just an update on where we are. It's kind of hard not to just read through each one to give some clarity, but, so some general items that I wanted to report, the board members on the subcommittees will be contacted tomorrow. We wanted to get another date set, so Martin, Steve, and Bridget, you'll be getting an email on, on that date. That's one. Two, board meeting in general will be held on November 15th. We'll have an action item to review and advise the debt, revise the deadlines that we're currently in here. So I'm proposing some ideas, but I think it's, I didn't feel like we should be reading it with suggested date changes and not having the opportunity to talk about it and make a decision at the next board meeting. And so, again, I've proposed some, some times and dates for consideration. So this, this update provides a status and effort on master planning, and since the last board meeting, the four areas, again, these are the four specific areas to identify. Number one is to identify specific needs and upgrades for the high school and the middle school. That first meeting, I'm skipping to A, that will be a kickoff meeting for the architectural And of the secondary schools will happen on the ninth, and that's Dor Whittier will be joining members of the administration team and myself for that work. B, the assessment evaluation for the upgrades presented will take place in nineteen. We'll have to, again, make some decisions on, on that secondary component. Again, I'm saying it here, but obviously that would need to be included in the budget. But if approved, work would be able to be started July 1 of 18. Under C, assuming that the funds are budgeted, I propose that that deadline for completion of this phase be changed from June 30th, 18, to April of 19. Item number two, under the master planning and visioning work, set up a system to monitor and report on, on issues and key, key impact areas. And this is where we had September 1 of 17. Under A, ATC currently does have, they, we expect to get information back from them on Friday, November 17th. And these specs that they provide on looking at specifically what is needed will be bid out. And with that in mind, a vendor to perform the test and to establish the baseline will be selected, with results projected, I'd love to say January, I just, I think it's unrealistic, and so I'm saying more realistic, February. B, under the enrollment and demographic data, I know Bridget and Jon Stewart had a conversation regarding this, but we, we will have, I think, confirmed information coming back by the end of November, that will be able to be reported to the board in December, first part of December. The second meeting of the Airport Noise Committee is scheduled soon. I don't, I didn't have that date.
December 5th.
Yeah, so Steve and I went to that last one, but December 5th is the next meeting. And again, this is the technical advisory committee, really just providing, you know, advisement, not, not specific decision-making. Item number D, assuming funds are budgeted, I propose that the deadline for the completion of, of this phase be changed from September 1, 17, to April 30th, 18. Item three, developing a contingency plan by December 31, 17, to ensure equitable delivery of educational services, should Chamberlain School need to be closed. The business office is currently working on the, on this update right now with me. B, that an updated draft will be available in December to help inform the budget, and that I propose that the deadline be, for completion of this phase be changed from September 1 to April 30th, 18. You'll, we are proposing to roll out some pretty specific things that may or may not, you may or may not want to have included in the budget, up to including such things like a contingency for, for mobile trailers, et cetera, based on that timeline. But again, these are some of the recommendations. And then four, revitalize, revitalize the district strategic plan, and do a SWOT analysis. Given my recommendation is to change this date to December 1, 19. And I do think, we probably should have a longer conversation about strategic plan, because it really probably should meld into policy governance in some way, and have, have more of a map out, some other form, because strategic planning typically is not one that, it would be something that the administration has, but strategic plan in our old days was the, was the driver of our outcomes that was shared and owned by the community. And I think we just, we need to be clear about, is it, is it the administrative and board strategic plan, or is it going to be something that needs to be vetted with the whole community? Because that kind of puts in conflict with your ends outcomes, or we include it in some, in some way.
Well, just a clarification on that one, it was a Phase One, so it's more of an assessment that would characterize what elements you'd be taking into a strategic plan.
Yeah. As opposed to a whole plan.
Yeah, and to me, this was a very high-level exercise. To me, this was almost a brainstorming, if you will, and then maybe a little bit of, you know, an example would be, you know, potential threats.
I had a couple.
F-35s, and, you know, and there might be some more.
I had some questions from public that weighed in and said, so we're going to do, you know, and they were, they're longer-term members, and then they were part of a community-wide strategic plan. And so I just, it has brought up a little bit of some confusion around, are we going to go through that whole process again, where we design our strategic plan for the district and?
Yeah, that might be one you could change the date to sooner, because I think this is more an internal exercise that would maybe be validated by some community members, but something that would serve as data when the community is pulled back together as a basis for those conversations.
Yeah, I didn't see the need for a change in the date on this one, frankly, and that's, that's over a year away. I would have thought that, you know, between the spring and next fall, and, you know, sometime over the summer even, you know, the.
The original date.
The internal, yeah, the original, the original date, I didn't think was a problem necessarily with that one. The other ones, I sort of understand how budget sort of flows into what work you can do to really meet those deadlines, and there's definitely a need for the changes to the dates to all those others, because some of them are already completely passed. But, but that one, I would have, I probably would have left the same.
My thinking on this one was this, that there's so many components.
I think you might be thinking about it in the context of the bigger strategic plan development. This is, this is really an initial phase where it's as much a self-assessment of what the district's, and I do think you're right, characterizing it as brainstorming, but making sure there's input from a variety of stakeholders.
Yeah, exactly. And then I also thought, it sounds a little bureaucratic, but a plan to make a plan. So it's, it was more sort of have this initial brainstorm, get community feedback, get some input.
Helpful.
And then actually lay out an actual plan for developing a strategic plan. It wasn't sort of, we're doing the strategic plan by December 31st, 2018.
That's helpful.
Other questions from the board?
So I just have the question of whether we'd have to warn this for anxious, if we're going to be changing what we have as an approved motion from December.
Yeah, I would recommend that we, if we, if you, you know, whatever date you want to, we put this on the next board meeting agenda, and specifically warn it, you know, it's those.
I thought that was the second, the second or general items. I do think it makes sense to have it as an action item for November 15th. And then the question is, do you want a board member, one of the subcommittee members on November 9th with the Dor Whittier meeting?
Certainly.
Or what is, what is the character of that?
No, it's really just to, you know, to begin the process, how's it going to go? Who's going to do it? Times, dates, you know, it's kind of the logistics, making sure that we're going to get what we want, what we've asked for. I'm fine if, if, you know, any, whatever you want.
What time is that scheduled for? Oh, here we go.
I want to say one o'clock. Look, right there.
One o'clock.
Yep, total. And it's going to be in the superintendent's conference room.
Yeah, I think I'll plan on.
Perfect.
I would like to see those popping up.
Nice, thanks.
All right. Good on that one?
Thank you for your feedback.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item 11. We're almost back on schedule. Policy review, we are. So we have three policies, one's a second reading, we have two first readings.
So Policy F4, prevention of harassment, hazing, bullying. And the board did ask last time for some, some feedback on, like, could you give us a little bit of, some data specific to that? Now, so I'm going to ask Stuart to do that in just a second. One of the things I just, I mean, this is probably a misstep, misguidance on my part, so in general, I want to be clear that when we're doing policy review, I don't necessarily want to pull all of the data that pertains to it. I don't think it's, because it shows up, what we should be doing is saying where, where this will show up, where you'll see the outcomes, or where you do see the outcomes, are in policy monitoring reports, X, Y, and Z. And we should be pointing back to the policy work as opposed to, you know, doing that. So I, I think.
Can I ask one quick question? This is just a little question at the beginning.
Sure.
Last time it was Policy F4, now it's Policy F5.
I don't know.
We're backwards, yeah. It was F5, now it's F4.
And so we went back and we saw that the lowest policy was F5, and so we had to correct.
Okay, okay, I was just.
So, anyway, that's, that's neither here nor there. I just should have said, you're going to see it, or in policy monitoring report, X, Y, Z, you'll see it. And again, I think, for instance, you know, some of the hazing, harassment, and bullying would show up under personal development, as well as citizenship, you know, for, for us. So we would point to those specific areas when, when that comes up. So, anyway, let us, let us walk you through a little bit of what we found, and then we'll move into the particular policy. But the data that you kind of asked for, Stuart can give you a little.
Well, this is just a small amount of data, this actually is from the monitoring reports I did in April on personal development and on citizenship. And I'm sorry that you don't have copies of this, but, you know, these reports, reports will come back to. But basically, since we're talking about bullying and school safety, this was self-reporting of students. If you remember, 20% of. If you remember, twenty percent of our students reported that, eighth graders, reported in the previous thirty days they felt they had been bullied. So, you know, that's not a number that we were particularly happy. It was a little better than the state number. At the high school level, that was twelve percent. So, you know, it's a middle school.
Phenomenon.
Issue and phenomenon. In terms of actually feeling safe though to go to school, only four percent of eighth graders in two thousand fourteen, just wanna say this is two thousand fourteen data, and actually, you'll have the new data because they just did the youth risk behavior survey this last year. So when we do this reporting again, the data will be from two thousand sixteen. We don't have that data yet, but we will. And again, for the high school students who did not feel safe, it was actually that same four percent. So in terms of actual feeling of safety, the other thing is we looked at actual discipline data in the citizenship piece because the end is practicing ethical behavior in all environments, including as a participant in the digital community. And then we reported in the last year, so this is last year's data, that seven elementary students, twelve middle school students, and seven high school students had engaged in some kind of attraction related to digital citizenship. And then in terms of engaging other, with others with humility, kindness, good humor, ethical behavior in all environments, including the digital community, and being proud of our shared experience, having fun along the way, we had pulled out the disrespect, bullying, and harassment. So these were students referred in those areas. Again, it does not mean that they actually were bullying or harassing, but it was a suspicion or concern. And again, for the elementary schools, it was twenty, for the high school, it was thirty-six. And I remember Steve particularly because it was seventy-two in the middle school, you know, asking some questions about that. So we'll, you know, that was a baseline data when we do this report next year, or this year, but later in the year. I guess it will be next year. I think by the time we get to personal development and citizenship, next week, the next board meeting, we'll be doing academic proficiency this year, that we do provide this data. So if there are parts, like other evidence or data that you want, that is not here, I think this is the proper place to put it.
Well, I think, yeah, and I wanna hear comments then on the, on the, on the policy. But when we do the monitoring report, I think an opportunity here is to call specifically to our, our hazing, harassment, and bullying, right? So that, you know, that this is the correlation to this report. And, you know, this, this policy speaks to how are we doing, specific in this monitored report.
But, but again, this, you know, these are the mandatory policies, you know, that the state requires, so they're not governing in themselves.
Yep.
Well, I, I was the one that asked the question and asked about trending information because everything I've been reading says that this is an upward trend in schools. So I appreciate that I asked the question before you brought us back to the policy governance conversation.
I know. I'm trying to do better, you know, the-
It's good, but actually, I'm a little concerned that the data is, that is available dates back to two thousand fourteen. So I'm looking at the implementation where it says annually, two or more designated employees are selected to receive complaints and publicize their availability. So I guess as a citizen, could I request that annual information from each of the schools?
So I would say two things. One is the information from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which is on the personal, that's from two thousand fourteen, that survey's done every two years.
Right.
The other data is from last year, it's from two thousand sixteen. It's not two thousand fourteen data, that the citizenship data, that's, that's actual discipline.
Okay, but if I wanted in this particular policy-
But the, the other pieces, I mean, that's a good question. Obviously, there's the, parents can call and request to talk to, that's why we have those designated people. You know, within the school, that's where it's supposed to go. So at that level of that working of policy, in terms of reporting out, you know, we have to make sure it's still not identifying data, you know, because we do send a report of individual student data to the state with our, you know, annual students who might have been bullied or harassed, other suspensions, fighting, everything like that. And so sometimes there's only one student who's been involved in a incident in a given year, and so that kind of data is a little hard to report because, again, that becomes identifying of that student in terms of reporting the data. So we just have to make sure we do it at the right size.
I was trying to get at your question, but-
Why not answer your question?
No, I think she's, specifically under two, you were saying.
Yeah, I'm-
Of, of the two people, and you wanna go and approach one of those designees.
Well, it just says two or more.
Yep.
They are, are authorized to receive complaints.
Yep.
And publicize their availability in any, is it, who, what avail, is, is it the complaints that are available, or is it the people that are available?
No, it's that they're available. It's that you ident, you're identifying as the person in that particular location to receive those concerns and complaints, and that it's made no, not, it's made known that you are the person or the go-to person in your, in your availability.
Okay, and, I mean, just FYI, there, this references an attachment that isn't attached, which I didn't know if that was intended or not, that's supposed to identify those individuals?
Yeah, that's the procedures that actually, we, we do have procedures that-
Yeah, so we should attach those, though.
We can attach them.
Yep.
But I guess the question is, if I went to these individuals and said, can you give me a three-year history of the complaints you've received, just the numbers?
That's not the intent of those people. Those people are who you would make, who would make sure they were-
Registered.
Maybe, maybe that's, it could be-
Well, we may need to clarify the language. But these are not reporters, these are-
These are receivers of-
These are receivers of-
Receivers and actors, yeah.
Okay.
So parents know who they're doing that, right?
Gotcha. So, so if, if I go back to my original question, which is to really evaluate the trending of complaints, even if it's aggregated over the entire district, how would-
How would you know how we're doing?
Yeah, how would we know how we're doing?
Yeah, we'd come back to that personal development. I think we'd come back to, yeah. That's, and, and may, and maybe that's where it needs to be boosted up, though, the, under evidence from the monitoring report.
Yeah, I just don't recall what evidence was given specifically.
I mean, I just gave you some of what I-
What, what was in there.
But it, but I, I don't get a sense of-
Of trend?
What the trend is, yeah.
Well, trend, yes, yes, it was-
Right.
Yeah, well, that's good. Maybe there needs, there could be a table or something that shows that.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Any other board questions or comments?
Yeah.
Alex?
On the second paragraph at the top in statement of policy, it says, to prohibit the unlawful harassment of students based on so on and so on. I think the word unlawful can be taken out. I wouldn't wanna have to try to hold ourselves to a standard where we need a criminal conviction or something like that to say it's an actual violation of policy, or at least for charges to be filed. Same goes in the next paragraph where it says unlawful hazing. You know, all hazing is unlawful. But we do, I don't think we need to reach out to law enforcement, or at least try to have the standards of law enforcement for this policy.
I think that, yeah, you, you make a good point. I think we've been, again, this is the model policy that's come out, and I think there's some, there's some specific reasons around the, the need and requirement to say unlawful, so that there's clarity that it is unlawful. It's not in and of itself just the word. But we can, we can circle back on that. I, I, I understand what you're saying. It feels like you don't, you shouldn't have to say something before hazing or harassment to quantify it as a problem.
Who created these model policies?
These are, these are done in concert, VSBA and VSA put them out. And they're vetted through their, you know, the legal teams that, that they're through their affiliation and/or their own, their own staff, so.
So can you circle back around to, to those two organizations on that issue?
Yep, yep. That's usually what we do.
Because that makes a lot of sense that that should be there.
Yep, and there is a, a strong desire amongst school districts across the state to have commonality, right, around these? So that's why we do that. But that's, those are good.
A small one on the, the first page still, that, let's see, one, two, three, the fourth paragraph, where it says, at the very last sentence, otherwise violates one or more of the board's disciplinary policies or the school's code of conduct. Should be district's code of conduct. I think this is just sort of a little cleanup of the model policy because it's really the-
Or instead of school, this should be district?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It doesn't say school district, it says schools' policy, and none of the schools have their own policies, really.
Gotcha.
It's the district that has policies.
That's good, yeah.
That's a very small one, but.
Mm-hmm.
I don't wanna jump ahead if anyone else has other stuff.
Actually, if I can clarify that, does, does the board under policy governa, governance actually have a disciplinary policy?
Should be districts.
Should be districts, yeah. Subject to-
Should, should be districts, disciplinary policies, or code of conduct.
Yeah, I think that's, that's better for sure.
The district. Probably right, yeah.
Do you have something else, Bridgette?
Yeah, I, another small one. On page three, under the definition of equity coordinator, says the equity coordinator is also responsible for overseeing implementation of the district's preventing and responding to harassment of students and harassment of employees policies. Are these, are those different policies than the one we're talking about because they have different titles? It's just confusing because it sounds like those are separate policies that are also supposed to be covered by this person. So it's just, the, the language is just awkward there.
Yeah, the reason I think, I believe the reason it's mentioned is because the equity coordinator is highly connected to the, to these types of events, and so it just simply pulls in those responsibilities.
I think, I think the issue is that references two different, two policies.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It seems separate.
Policy, but the harassment of students would be this policy, so.
We just need to make sure that-
But the employee policies, I think, is the issue.
This just feels like an artifact of this being a model policy, that it, that it needs to sort of tie in-
One or the other?
What we're calling, well, it just needs to tie in with what we're calling our policies. So the district's prevention of harassment, hazing, and bullying with students policy, and-
Yeah, yeah.
The prevention of hara, if we have, I don't know if we have a specific clause that's called-
Well, I got that dated.
Yeah, but it just, so that this lines up with what's actually in our set of policies because it's confusing.
Yeah, yeah, I got it, it's good.
Then, under number seven, paragraphs of harassment and, and under sexual harassment, I was confused about why there's this limitation in the last, under the definition of sexual harassment, the last clause, it says, and includes situations when one or both of the following occur. So that seems to limit what's considered sexual harassment. So my question is, you know, say that an employee harasses a student, and it doesn't necessarily hurt their ability to get their education, or it could be interpreted that it doesn't, it's still harassment, you know? So I was just wondering why that clause needs to be there, and includes situation where one or both of the following occur. Because that seems to limit all the stuff that comes before it.
Mm-hmm. I don't know. I, I would need, I have to think. We need some help on that one, I think. Includes, there's a real one. Situations. I, I, we'll, we'll get some feedback on that.
That's the right place.
And then, under paragraph C, on the same, under the definition of harassment, there is this whole list of things that constitutes what's considered harassment. I didn't understand why other protected categories, there's this big long list, and then there's a shorter list for racial harassment. I would've assumed that those would've just mirrored one another. So racial harassment sort of stops after the use of epithets, stereotypes, racial source, or comments, and it both stop. I don't understand why insults, derogatory remarks, gestures, threats, graffiti, display, all those other things wouldn't be included under racial harassment as well. I would've just assumed the language would line up with them.
Insults, uh, yeah, why not? I don't, I don't know. We'll ask them.
I'm just going back, because these are mostly notes from last week, actually. Yeah. And I won't bore everybody with the tiny little typos.
It's fine.
There's just little cleanup typos with spacing and that kind of stuff that, that can be done offline. But those were the, the two major questions, really, about those definitions.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right.
Okay, we'll bring that back to you. Six is student alcohol and drugs. And this is updated from our previous with the changes in red.
This is probably just being, um, because I wasn't here the last time we sort of updated this policy, I don't, I don't believe, um, yeah, well, that's-
Oh, you mean before, when it was put in place?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So my, my question is, under this support and referral system, it seems surprising to me that this would be done on a school-by-school basis, by principle, as opposed to centrally, because it would seem to me that there would be, we would want some kind of standard procedure or standard sort of chain of events that happens as the students identify that has one of these problems. I was just kind of surprised that for consistency's sake, that wouldn't be done at a central office or central, you know, administrative body of some sort, or even if it's a team that includes people from those different schools. But to leave it to each school seemed like we would have then different competing ways of doing something that seems pretty important. Was there a reason that it was done at the school level?
Yeah, I, I think in general, you know, the, we're available, district resources are always available, but the resources within our schools, relationships are the component of, whether it's a guidance counselor or a principal, is really the, the way in which you wanna deal with this. Along with what we have been doing to date is the utilization of also our school resource officers, which are kind of that district flu, if you will, for kind of that, that compliance, you know, with, whom, whom they also have a relationship with because of the programs in which we provide them. So it is, I think, I mean, I like the fact that it's done with, with the staff that our students most, most and best know, with the resources of our affiliated professionals, which could be, in some cases, our Howard, Howard Center people, you know, that may be part of that team, school resource officer. Again, and it's very different at elementary, middle, and high school. It, it changes upon that approach versus if it was a district team, nobody knew, came in, and, you know, credited those consequences.
Well, I'm not talking about the execution of the policy, or like, who's actually doing the, the intervention with the student. But I would've thought that there would be a standardized system of, you know, the student who's been identified, and, and this is kind of how they go through the system. And again, as I thought about more, it's sort of like, well, the elementary schools, this would be less of a problem, obviously. This would be more of a middle school versus high school. And so maybe there's a different way of going about things with a middle schooler versus a high schooler. It still just seems strange to me, especially when you get to things like, the principal shall establish procedures for administering emergency first aid related to alcohol and drug use. That seems like a very standard thing that, that should be standardized across schools. I wouldn't think that that would be left to, you know, whichever principal happens to be in the building in a given year is, is establishing those policies. It just felt a little strange because it felt like this is a district-wide policy, but then we're kind of leaving the actual policy itself to principals in the buildings. So as you said, like-
I understand that, I can see that.
Yeah, it, it just, it just felt strange to me that it was not something necessarily that you want a lot of innovation on it. You would want something very clear, that these are what is expected if the student-
Yeah, and it may be, I mean, our, our handbook, our student handbooks have specific, you know, directions on this, which are consistent, more consistent than it portrays here. That's good. I, I, let, let us just talk about that a little bit more. I mean, currently, we have procedures in place that are consistent, I would say fairly, very consistent across high school, middle school, and even our elementary programming with, with the teams. So maybe we can be a little bit more specific. It's good, we can, we can look at that.
Yeah, and I guess along those same lines, is there, do, do the data of trends here reside with one, are they centralized within the district somewhere so there's an opportunity to see what trends are and where there may be emerging needs?
We do report a lot of the information, you know, of violations or of, and that does get reported in through our, our management system, which we can draw from, one of which, you know, Stewart alluded to some of that same data that it pulls from. So, again, it's dependent upon us putting it in, but. So again, it's dependent upon us putting it in, but...
So there, you know, so these are that, you know, because I only pulled up data. And then again, in the report, we also had, especially the self-referring, these cigarettes, drugs, alcohol, the Uthris Behavior Survey, and of course, it's the 2014 data. But when you get the next report, it'll be the 14 and the 16 data. We could go back and get the 12 data if you wanted.
But the point being, I think, to Elizabeth's point, do we, do we get the data? Yes. And are we using that data to look at, you know, what can we be doing differently?
Well, and it, and it's a little bit different to me. The Uthris Behavior Survey is self-reporting in, in a literal survey.
Right.
Self-referral is different and being referred by staff.
Or in fracture, right, yeah.
We had that data as well in terms of violations. I haven't looked at that in reports, but again, we could certainly do that to show the trends.
I think what we said before is that our monitoring reports, what monitoring reports kind of are covered, covering these pieces. And we could, when we do the monitoring report...
What level of evidence?
The evidence certainly relates to the particular policy, which I have to look. I don't know that we've, we've done it that way, so.
Yes, one more question is the very last paragraph of policy. Under notification, "The superintendent shall ensure that parents and students are given copies of the standards of conduct and disciplinary sanctions contained in this policy." I didn't really see sanctions in here, not that I'm advocating for them, but it doesn't, it's, it's not clear to me what happens if a student violates the policy in some way.
Yeah, sanctions may be tough. It could be consequences.
Well, no, my point is it's just not outlined what...
The policy, they're in the, they're in the manuals, so it really should reference that.
Okay. It just, it just needs to make sure that the sanctions are not included in the policy. Because as I read this, I was thinking, you know, there were all kinds of sanctions from in high school if we violated this policy. No sports, no, yeah.
The thing is that, you know, in our present policy, which is, if you do something in middle school, it's a second violation if you do something in high school. Pretty much else, you start, you know, with whatever happened in middle school, you start clean. So, so we do have policies and we do that.
But are those policies or those, that's where I'm confused, because this is the policy.
We have actual, not policies, but procedures.
Procedures, okay.
What it means to sell, you know, sell, what it means to use, so on and so forth.
Any other comments or questions? All right, move on to...
Firearms.
This is, this is tough for you, firearms.
I know, I'm sorry. It's like, oh, too much.
We didn't have any of those.
I know.
Firearm?
Yeah. Yeah, I had a good time.
Could have alternated these two.
So by the time you get the glass size, you'll feel pretty good.
So this one was last, I don't know, did we have, you haven't seen this, first reading yet.
And is this one, again, a model policy that came from someplace else?
Yes. Required, and it's, it's a required policy and it's obviously...
Do we have a hunter's education program here?
We do not. There is, there is in the community. There's, through the REC program, they have a hunter safety program.
Questions or comments on this policy? Given that it's the first reading, we'll move it.
Sounds good.
Number of readings? We will move on to setting the agenda for the November fifteenth meeting.
So this is what I, the actions on the master planning and vision, visioning, those date timelines adjustments are there. We needed to talk about whether or not, maybe in my report, I could just do the high school librarian, library plan? I don't know. Or is that, are you feeling like this? I, I gotta time look at this a little bit, but would you like to see it in November? Or do you want to push it to December? So I had the library redesign. We also had legislative breakfast or legislative, probably, topics that we wanted to bring up. I could put that under my report, too. I'm, I'm conscious of the timing here. I don't know what your pleasure is.
I guess I would like to hear about the library before it physically moves.
Okay, so I'll, I'll put that under...
Last meeting.
I'll put that under my report and legislative agenda topics.
Is that the white paper concept? Or is that, because that, I thought would be early December.
I'll push that one to December.
I'm not going to be here for the next meeting.
Oh, right, right. So that makes, makes sense. Is that...
Yeah, that's what I had written down for myself because I was going to take the first draft.
So we'll do this, that will be, the legislative topics will be for December, okay?
Speaking of early December, the, the last one says, set agenda for December first. I don't think we have any on December, because it's the sixth, isn't it? I was going off of what was in that.
Yeah, the MP, the...
The website.
Yeah. December first is a Friday. That's certainly not right.
It'd be the sixth.
It would be the sixth. Okay, right. Yep, Chamberlain. Thank you, Bridgette.
And did we put 2.4s back on? Financial condition activities.
Yeah, we need to do that. Yep. So under 11, we'll add 2.4.
I'm not sure we're going to be able to do four there, so...
I know. I'll have to calibrate a little bit.
All right, move on to future agenda items.
Could add teacher evaluation system there.
The teacher evaluation system in pilot. Anything else on future agenda items? Anything that can come off?
You mean scheduled or just not interested in it anymore?
I think it should be maybe that we've scheduled to discuss.
Oh.
Hopefully, there was some screening criteria that got it on this list.
I don't know. Maybe it was a previous board member. We haven't taken it off yet. I mean, like federal, state...
You'll blame it on the past board members.
Education policies, I mean.
So my only question, for example, going to be doing academic proficiency ends monitoring on the next meeting, and my plan is to then, you know, depending on that, you know, to do them separately four times a year. So I don't know if we need to add ends monitoring updates because it's not going to be part of regulations.
We have to, our, our practice has been, we have to do it first before we can take it off, yeah. But good effort.
I swear.
Thank you. That kind of holds us accountable.
That's right.
Okay, consider the minutes of the October 18th meeting.
No, I didn't have them.
I didn't see them. Yeah, I didn't see those either.
Yeah, I didn't see those other, and they're not in this package.
Next time.
So we'll have to pass.
So we'll move that.
So we should go back to that agenda and make sure that it says, consider the minutes of November 1st and October 18th, the agenda we were just...
Put that on the November fifteenth.
Yeah, on the 15th, yeah.
And consent agenda.
So we have, I have two here, and one's very specific to somebody. But the first is under the new hire report, we have James Bean. This is the elementary teacher at, at Chamberlain, and then we have Elizabeth Stockbridge. These are, these are not ads. The James Bean was filling someone who was hired and left. And Elizabeth is also filling a position with a long-term sub.
She was a long-term academic supplier, so that...
Right, so she moved up. All right. And so that's the hire, and then we have a retirement resignation of the gentleman that sits before you, who's been here a long time in our district, who has announced that he will no longer be returning. He's going to go off and travel the country and whatever. So I just want to, you know, personally thank Stuart for his, he's not done yet, by the way, so to be clear.
It's actually, I know it says 30th of June to the 29th, right?
But, so to be clear...
You're not allowed to leave until Martin has signed off on your ends monitoring.
Exactly, right.
So you may be here a while.
Right. So anyway, I mean, I'd be remiss not to say, you know, a personal thank you to Stuart and all, all that he's done. He's been here for a long time. He started out in the middle school, and he's been in the central office for a good number of years, you know, helping me and, and others in the past pave, pave the way through pretty important issues within our, within our district. So I want to personally thank you, Stuart. Again, you still have a lot of work to do, but this is, I think he's also being very respectful and, and making sure that the position, individual who, who would, would come in his place has time and appropriate warning to do so. So I really appreciate letting you know.
I would offer the same on behalf of the board, Stuart. I've spent more Wednesday evenings with you than I can count. But Stuart's been with the district for 17 years and assistant principal at the middle school, and most recently as director of learning for six or seven years.
Eight years, just eight years in central office.
Yeah. But also a familiar face, supporting David at our routine meetings. So we appreciate all your support and look forward to working with you through June 20th. Thank you. All right, move on to AP Order 15. Any questions? And do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
You'll never be Martin. He thinks he's going to fly.
You're adjourned. Thank you.